I call the meeting of the San Juan Unified School District Board of Education to order. At this time, we will move into closed session to consider student readmissions in two cases, and to discuss one personnel matter, superintendent's evaluation.
Thank you, President Viasquez. The board will now move to closed session. The open session is expected to resume approximately 6:30 PM, and we will return at that time. Good evening, and welcome to the San Juan Unified School District's Board of Education meeting for June 9th. It is 6:30, and we are about to get started. President Viasquez, are you available?
I am. Thank you, Mr. Allen. I call the meeting of the San Juan Unified School District Board of Education back to order. Due to the executive orders issued by Governor Newsom due to the COVID-19 outbreak, tonight's meeting is being conducted via the Zoom platform. The meeting is being audio and video recorded, and the recording may capture sounds and images of those attending this meeting. The recording will be posted on the district website. We thank you for joining us and ask for your patience as we use this format in an effort to maximize access and participation during this time of social distancing and other restrictions. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome and good evening. I am Paula Viasquez, Board President. Joining me tonight is Dr. McKibben shortly, Ms. Zima Creason, Board Clerk, Ms. Pam Costa, and Mr. Saul Hernandez, Board Members. Superintendent Kern and other staff members are also in attendance. Before we begin, I'd like to review the two methods that are available to submit public comment for tonight's meeting. The first option is to submit a public comment online using the form located on the district website That's www.sanjuan.edu/june9. If you wish to submit a public comment on more than one agenda item, please submit a separate form for each item on which you are commenting. Comments received by 6:00 PM today have already been shared with all board members. Comments received after 6:00 PM tonight, including those comments received after 6:00 PM tonight, including those submitted during
So those who have co-hosts set, please be careful to not hit the pause or stop buttons down by the record button. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Comments received after 6:00 PM tonight, including those submitted during the meeting, may be read during the meeting depending on time restrictions. Comments may only be submitted on an agenda item up until the time that that agenda item has been discussed. The second option is on the Zoom platform where you may use the Raise Your Hand feature. When you are called on, you may share a comment via audio during the meeting. Please note that all public comments are subject to a two-minute limit, or approximately 1,500 characters, and I will periodically prompt Mr. Allen to remind individuals of how to use the Raise Your Hand function on the Zoom platform. With that, we are at Item D, Approval of the Minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for May 26th?
So moved. I'll second.
It's been moved by Ms. Costa and seconded by Ms. Creason. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous. We are at Item E, Organizations and Announcements. We have Item E1, Staff Reports.
Sorry, Paul, I'm trying to help Dr. McKibben get on, so he was having troubles. Okay, I'm gonna have Rick Messer do an update to start, and then I'll have a follow-up update after him as well. So, Rick, if you'd take it away.
Okay, good evening, President Viasquez, members of the Board, Superintendent Kern, and Ms. Cunningham. The purpose of this staff report is to update the board on the status of creating a plan for opening up high school athletics and activities this summer. We know athletics and activities play a significant role in the culture and communities of our schools. So, back on May 19th, the National Federation of State High School Associations, which is known as the NFHS, put out a guideline for opening up high school athletics and activities this summer. These guidelines basically lay out a three-phase model for planning, preparing, and training, and then allowing for on-field activities related to summer athletics as well as extracurricular activities. So, we've started to look at the different ways in which we could start to open up a little bit for athletics. So with that, two weeks ago, Ron Barney, who's our district athletic director, and myself, met with our district athletic directors at each of the nine high schools to share these guidelines and start the conversation around what openings could look like within these new guidelines. So, within that, we've also started to work with other leagues. Coach Barney has reached out to the different leagues that our schools participate in to meet with their commissioners to get feedback on ideas and thoughts of the processes within the same framework of the NFHS guidelines. So to build on that, just recently, we've also had our local superintendents, led by Superintendent Kern, have created a co-committee of athletic leaders in the district that are gonna come together on Thursday for the first meeting to work to create guidelines for opening up our athletics. And, not that we're gonna create a lockstep for every district, that's not the goal, but the goal is to get our best thinking, our best ideas on paper, that will create the safest opportunity for our students and our student athletes and our students in other activities to come back onto our campuses this summer to participate. Along with that work, we're also in contact with the Sacwakine section of the California Interscholastic Federation, which is our section. And the CIF basically is the governing body for high school athletics in California. So we've been working with them, trying to get feedback on not only what are, how we should bring back sports, but what are the possibilities of sports this fall, this winter, and the spring. What we know today is that the 10 sections of the CIF are meeting in Los Angeles for three days to start planning, or hopefully create some guidance of a plan of what athletics could look like this coming 2021 school year. So although we don't have a lot of solid plans in front of us, we do have a pretty comprehensive set of guidelines that the NFHS has given us, and now coming together with our colleagues from other districts, our goal is to hopefully create some type of consistency within our region of what we're going to be able to offer all of our students, and give them that opportunity to participate. And so with that, President Viasquez, I'm open for any questions.
Do any of my colleagues have any questions? Mr. Messer? Mr. Hernandez?
Yes, Mr. Messer, thank you for that update. It's very helpful, and we appreciate being on the forefront of that. But, Mr. Messer, it seems as the numerous emails that we're receiving that there's a misconfusion as to what, you know, what's out there, and that's probably because other districts are making decisions, and not necessarily those decisions affect our district. So I know, as we're getting these emails, you're responding individually to these parents, to people that are concerned. I'm just wondering if there's a way that we can get a message to our district so we can have a, you understand what I mean?
Yes.
Except, you see, one at a time, that we say, hey, this is what we're doing in our district. This is what we're trying to do. We haven't made any decisions yet, but what do you think about that?
So, just today, we worked with, Trent Allen has worked with the other districts. We did create a joint letter from the superintendents describing this work, that it is our interest, all of us, to get athletics started. It's on all of our high school websites as of today. So, community members can go to our websites, they're going to see this joint letter from all of the districts that are involved that's pretty much state that we do have the same interest, we are working on it, and we want to create a plan as soon as possible. That is going to create a safe re-entry into our activities. So that is, first and foremost, that's out there. And what I've been responding to today, I've personally, I think we've had about 20, I've responded about 26 folks today, but Coach Barney is also getting phone calls through the athletics office. Our athletic directors have been getting, you know, phone calls as well. And we're sharing with them that we do share the same interest, and that we are working on it. And now we're pointing them to the website so they can actually see our commitment to do that as well.
One more question, Mr. Messer. Thank you. And how does that affect the summer sport, youth programs that feed into our sports programs? You know, the midget footballs, the midget, you know what I mean? How are they gonna be affected by this, and are they being included in this?
Well, as of right now, they're completely shut down as well. I mean, they're under the same guidelines that we are. But, obviously, we don't have a lot of jurisdiction over AAU. We don't have jurisdiction over the youth football leagues. But there is gonna come a point where, as things loosen up, they do use our facilities.
Right.
And that is where, I mean, we're gonna have to deal, because part of the guidelines from the NHFS is about how we keep our facilities clean on a regular basis after every practice and every, I mean, so there's a lot of time and effort in these guidelines related to just cleaning, cleaning, and more cleaning. So, we'll have to cross that bridge, but we're not directly involved with them at this point. But I think we'll hear from them as we start to open up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Are there any further questions from my colleagues? Ms. Creason?
Thank you for the update, Mr. Messer. That's really helpful. And I think more than a comment, just tell me if I'm on the right track with this. You know, I just wanna say, you know, of course, we've got a lot of communications on the topic, and I want folks to know that it's not our intent to keep kids out of sports. So we would love to have kids in sports, but we also have to meet our responsibilities as good stewards and board members, and we have to follow guidelines. We can't just make the furrows. But, as Mr. Messer said, you know, we want the same thing that you do, but we just need to make sure that we follow the rules that we all have to follow, and that we keep everyone safe. So, Mr. Messer, is there a way, do you have an idea of how next steps will be communicated to the community as we move forward in this process of reopening?
Well, our first step, obviously, we started today making sure that everyone understands we do share the same interest. So I think that's gonna be important to help relieve some stress from our community. But every, every community is going through this. And I think working together in a region is gonna be, help with lowering the stress, because in some cases, out in other counties, you know, some districts said, we're just gonna open up, and it put big pressure on the rest of us. Well, what they found is they really didn't open up, but they said they were. And so it's just created some issues, and I think this is an incredible opportunity as joint districts working together, that we're gonna create a plan that everyone will hear relatively the same. Again, it's up to the superintendent and board members to decide what our plan will be in the end, but we're hoping for some consistency and continuity in that plan.
And I think that we all feel comfortable making the promise that we're going to communicate our plans out as soon as the plans are made, that we're not gonna hold any information, we're gonna be completely transparent. And again, we share the same interest. Cool, thank you.
Exactly.
Ms. Costa?
I think the only thing to add, I mean, to your point, Mr. Messer, I don't, I think some people said, oh, we're going for a full opening, but I think in reality, this is just a very, every part of this is very nuanced, and it's about risk modification and risk mitigation where we can. And so while we're seeing kind of this broad-based outcry for all sports, I think the reality is that each is different, and we are probably looking at, I mean, you know, there's still a lot of work that goes into this, but we're probably looking at different sports having a different amount of availability and being open. I mean, there's a difference between, you know, track and field and contact sports, et cetera. And these are all the very complicated things that take time to look through. So just wanna kind of acknowledge that, know that it's a lot of work that you're undergoing now and both ahead of you, but I think it'll be a task of ours to kind of message that it's not a, it's not a binary thing, where either open or close. It's gonna be like everything on some kind of spectrum of risk.
Yes, you're exactly right, and that's our goal. As we get, we're hoping, I mean, we can't rely on a hope, but we're hoping that the CIF at the state level is going to provide some guidance that will help include in that consistency of what sports potentially can open. We know there's low-contact sports that are more accessible to being able to start, and we know that the high-contact sports probably won't. So, but that's, we're hoping for, we're working towards that guidance, at least to give us that general direction to help us make the right decisions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Messer, and we look forward to updates as they become available.
Thank you.
Mr. Kern, did you have items you'd like to add?
Yeah, just two items to touch on, and just so that folks understand why my camera's going off and on. I'm trying to work with Mr. Allen. We're trying to get Dr. McKibben into the meeting. He's having some technical difficulties at his home, so we're using various different links. So, just be patient with us. Hopefully, we get him on here soon. Two items I just wanted to share with the board and the community. Last Friday, we held a Superintendent's Parents Advisory Committee meeting of representatives from each of those schools. We had sent out the invite to those representatives, and we had about 30-plus folks that represent our school sites attend that meeting, really provided an update on two things, an update on the budget, as well as an update that the board and the community members who are here tonight as well are gonna hear that Deputy Bassinelli shares about the COVID-19 update. That item probably lasted, sharing the elements of questions, about an hour and fifteen minutes. They had a lot of questions, and it was great, because we had a lot of dialogue back and forth, and then the update. And then we just had some general Q and A at the end as well. So it was good information, good feedback we got from those folks, so that was positive. The second thing that I wanted to share is, last Friday, we had our first session, which we're calling a Time to Heal our Listening Sessions. And the purpose of the Time to Heal Listening Sessions are to provide an accepting and supportive dialogue to heal the hurts that recent events have triggered, and the suffering that has occurred as a result of oppression and racism. And I wanted to call out some of the partnerships that we worked with. Specifically, we had three co-hosts over the last two days. And on Friday, we had about 140 participants and 25 facilitators. And Monday, we had about 160 participants and 30 facilitators. The staff facilitators are part of the Equity Liaisons and the Social Justice Collaborative. But Armani Easley has been at both of those sessions as kind of one of our moderators, and he's from Project Optimism. Michael Casper from Improve Your Tomorrow partnered with Armani on the first one. And then at the second one, Janika Rolland from Epic Education, she presented along with Armani. And then the other partners that have helped us with this have been representatives from UCAN, the Mutual Assistance Network, and Project Ed Quickkey. So, then, I wanted to call out kind of four themes that are already coming out of this. And again, we're gonna be coming back with additional meetings where we really hear from staff and then the community, again, with points of action will be, bring back. But the four I kinda wanna call out are, and there are more than this, but I thought I'd just touch on these four real quickly. Conversations about race and anti-racism need to happen with staff and students. There's been a very, very strong piece around this next one. Training and professional development offerings on equity and equity practices need to be mandatory. Curriculum needs to include all of our students' identities, and in a positive way. And finding ways for a whole system to hold each other accountable to the work. So we will be continuing to provide updates to the board, probably during the staff updates as we're doing this work, and I know this will continue in the fall as well. So President Viasquez, I just kinda wanted to share those two items with both the board and the community as well.
Thank you, Mr. Kern. I'll stop to see if my colleagues have any questions on what you reported out at this time. Ms. Creason?
Again, with a comment, just very thankful that Superintendent Kern is taking the time to do this very hard work and have hard conversations, and put himself out there to really listen and learn, and move forward differently. I know that we've had several conversations about the need to heal and to change, and to really address racism and call it what it is. And so I really look forward to working with Superintendent Kern, and the board, and staff, and the community to heal, to really heal, and to to address it, to really address it, and move forward for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Creason. We are now at Items E2 through E4. I'll turn to staff and see if we have any known reports from board-appointed district committees, employee organizations, or other district organizations. I am not aware of any, but wanna make sure that that's the case.
Let me double-check here real quick, and I'm gonna go back between Trent, because he's doing double-duty right now, so hold on one second, folks. All right, no employee organization reports or additional reports from committees at this time.
Okay, so with that, we are at Item F, Visitor Comment.
I, Paul, I
This is typically where we turn to Mr. Allen to give the direction, but I can also indicate
Close session action first, Paul.
Oh, I'm all over the place. Okay, we are at Item E5. Forgive me, Ms. Creason.
Thank you. The board voted unanimously to accept as written two denied readmissions in case numbers R808 and R809. The board has completed its evaluation of Superintendent Kern for the 2019-2020 school year. The board voted unanimously to give him a positive evaluation, and based on the positive evaluation, Superintendent Kern will receive the benefits identified in his employment contract.
Thank you, Ms. Creason. With that, we are at Item F, Visitor or Comment. As a reminder, we will be using the Zoom platform where individuals can, may use the Raise Your Hand feature. I will call on individuals who have indicated that they'd like to raise their hand, and you may share a comment via audio during the meeting. Please note again that all public comments are subject to a two-minute limit. I will also like to remind the public that comments are limited to two minutes. Under the Ralph M. Brown Act, the board is not allowed to comment on items that are not on the agenda. So we are not ignoring your comments. We just can't respond to any individual comments. The superintendent can refer items to staff who can follow up with you. And here is the slide for both of our options for public comment. Mr. Allen, would you like to reiterate our processing procedure? I kind of went over the highlights, but I'm sure I could use some help.
Absolutely. So this is the opportunity to comment on an agenda, on an item that is not on tonight's agenda. If you do have a comment on an item that is on tonight's agenda, we would ask that you hold your comment until that time. Again, if you have a comment for an item that is not on tonight's agenda, now would be the appropriate time to come forward. If you'd like to comment during the live meeting and you are on the Zoom platform, we would ask that you raise your hand at this time. You can do so by clicking the Raise Hand button if you are on a mobile device. That is the Raise Hand button in the black bar at the bottom of your screen. If you are on a desktop device, the Raise Hand button is typically found at the bottom of the participants list on your device. And if you are calling in today and you'd like to raise your hand to comment, star nine on your telephone keypad will allow you to raise your hand. President Viasquez, we have two individuals, it looks like, who have their hand raised at this time. We also have some written comments to share. Would you like to start with the raised hands?
Yes, I will do that. I see two raised hands, as you indicated. I see first, Mr. Scott Rafferty, followed by participant Tracy F. So you'll be on standby, and we'll go ahead and begin with Mr. Scott Rafferty. Begin when you're ready, sir.
Hello. I think Mr. McKibben is not the only person having difficulty joining the meeting. Several of my clients have suggested that they are unable to join, so I am commenting, making comments that I expected others to make. I know you think that trustee area elections is over with, but there, it's not. And there are problems when the superintendent signs a letter prepared by members of the bar indicating that on March 16th, you reached out to me, I was demanding, and I refused to categorically to, to discuss delaying implementation altogether. That's not the case. Three days later, you unequivocally said you were moving forward and committed to it. I continued to discuss, to email proposals to delay, reschedule, even mitigate if 2020 was impossible. So what you told the governor about the school district to which he sends his children was the opposite of the truth, and that has had statewide implications. And it's shameful. In the response to our Brown Act challenge, we were told that Superintendent Kern did not speak with any board members about delaying until 2022, that his statement to the public meeting that we had discussed that related only to his cabinet. We may be testing that claim. I know that some of you have been contacted by constituents asking you if that is really true. And we're going to persist in bringing reform to this district, and hopefully bring a higher standard of candor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rafferty. Next up, we have Tracy F. Please begin when you are ready.
Thank you, everybody, for this opportunity to share. I'm new to speaking to the board, my very first time, yay for me. I'm actually contacting you because I do have some inquiries in regards to what I heard tonight, and also in regards to the athletic programs for the high schools. So, you know, really quickly, what comes to mind is, is what is the commitment? You know, what is the goal date to present the athletic plan? You know, are parents going to be invited to this committee led by Kent Kern? I would like to have a better understanding of what the district clarifies as a high-contact sport. I have two students that are enrolled in high school. One's gonna be a senior, one's gonna be a sophomore. My senior lost his spring baseball program, and he is experiencing some severe mental health challenges regarding that. He's, you know, grieving the loss of that, and the anticipation of not having it this next year has been really hard on him. I have concerns that he will drop out of school. He's very fed up. I'm certain that he is not the only student with the same feelings, and it puts a lot of pressure on parents to, you know, keep him motivated and share with him that it's not all about, you know, baseball, right? But, so I just wanna know if parents really are gonna have an opportunity to be on this collaborative committee, so that we can have some output and actually be able to be part of the solution, and collaborate on, you know, tasking out some of that stuff. I know you guys got your hands full on just trying to get them back in the classroom, right? So I would be available to be on that committee. I know a lot of people that would be. So, you know, that's really just mostly my comment. I would just really like
And that's two minutes, Tracy. You've reached your time, but thank you very much for joining us and expressing your comments. At this time, I see one more individual who has raised their hand using the Raise Their Hand function on Zoom. I also invite at this moment anybody else who is participating here virtually to raise their hand at this time. But at the moment, I will recognize participant A, Luna, and invite you to begin when you are ready with your two-minute remark.
Hi, everyone. My name is Angela Luna, and I teach 5th grade at Whitney, and I'm also part of the Equity Work and the Equity Liaisons. And I would like to publicly thank Superintendent Kern for his leadership, his letter, his participation. It's amazing, and I love the example that's being set, and I look forward to the work to continue. I'd also like to acknowledge Diana Marshall. She has been amazing in her work, in her willingness to be vulnerable in these meetings. She has been amazing in her work, in her willingness to be vulnerable in these meetings, and I look to her as an example of how to handle some tough situations. So I encourage anyone who's listening to please join us tomorrow from 3:00 to 5:00 to continue the work, the anti-racist and racism work within San Juan Unified. Thank you so much.
Thank you for joining us this evening. Seeing no other hand raised on the Zoom platform, I want to invite Mr. Allen to read the public comments that were submitted electronically after 6:00 P.M.
Thank you, President Viascas. We do have one comment that was received after 6:00 P.M. for general public comment. It is from Amy Vell. Amy says, "Will SJUSD Discovery Clubs be reopening during the summer for their summer program? If so, what type of restrictions? We have our son contracted at 10 hours per week, so only need him to go two specific days a week, and no other families that are also in the program that we can split the week with if that would help reduce class size." And that is our only comment that we have received for general public comment at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. With that, we are at item G, the consent calendar. Do we have any public comments for items that are on the consent calendar? Mr. Allen, I believe we do not. I'm looking at the list as well.
We do not, but if we might, President Viascas, I believe we have Dr. McKibben via dial-in, so I won't be able to mute and unmute him himself, but I'm going to test to make sure that we can allow him to comment if we can take just a moment. Dr. McKibben, if you could say hello first. Perfect.
Testing, one, two, three. This is Dr. McKibben.
Excellent. Thank you.
Glad to have you with us. We can.
Okay. I am so sorry.
Glad you could join us. No problem.
Thank you.
At this, seeing no public comments for items on the consent calendar, do any board members wish to remove any items from the consent calendar? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Go move. So I could have it.
I am going to go with it was moved by Ms. Costa and then seconded by Dr. McKibben, who I also heard. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
That was unanimous. We are now at business items. We are at item I, one endorsement of the superintendent's statement supporting students, families, staff, and community members against racism. I will present the topic, followed by visitor comment, and then we will open it up to board discussion. This has been a pivotal week for our nation. While addressing one public health crisis, that of COVID-19, we were violently reminded of the biggest and oldest public health crisis that we have yet to address, that of systemic racism. As the whole world reacted to the murder of George Floyd by Minneapolis police officers, we recognized that waiting to officially say something as a district was not an option. The superintendent released the following statement on June 1st. "We stand with our students, staff, families, and community in grieving the death of George Floyd. In one tragic and preventable act, the world was brutally exposed to the racism and inequity endured by many Black Americans daily and ingrained into institutions throughout our country. It is important that we acknowledge how this event has impacted our youth and community, the pain it has caused, and why so many are rightfully demanding change. It is our hope that real change will result and is brought about through peaceful demonstration, civic participation, and engagement. If that is to occur, we each have a role to play in standing up to acts of injustice, both big and small, and engaging in the hard conversations to build greater understanding and acceptance. Our staff will be holding listening sessions with our students and staff to help share how recent events have impacted them and how we, as a system, can support change in our schools, our community, and our world. In addition to this statement, staff immediately organize not just listening session, but a calendar and plan that ends with action. These discussions and actions directly acknowledge the unique role that we, public education as an institution, has historically played in perpetuating racism and the role and responsibility we have to disrupt implicit racial bias and other forms of discrimination to improve access, achievement, and wellness for our Black students. To some extent, this is a formality. This is work that has already been embarked upon. However, words matter, and particularly at this moment in time, silence speaks volumes. We cannot afford to be silent. Our children cannot afford our silence. At this time, I wanted to present my colleagues an opportunity to discuss and endorse this statement." Mr. Allen, do we have any visitor comments on this item?
President Viascas, we do not have any comments shared via the written form. However, I do see one hand raised. If you would like to start with that comment.
As do I. I see Antonio looking to be recognized, so please begin when you are ready with your comment, Antonio.
And I'm seeing Antonio's hand has went down all of a sudden. So Antonio, if you would like to comment, please raise your hand again. Actually, it looks like Antonio has left the meeting.
That being the case, at this time, I'd like to open it up to my colleagues for board discussion.
President Viascas, are we going to go in order of DIAS, or did we raise hands?
Sure, that's what we've been doing in this platform, so that sounds like a in keeping with our tradition we've established via Zoom. So we'll begin with Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you. Um, I just want to say, appreciate the comments, and more than anything, I think that as a district, besides as a board, we, I see that other parts of the district are trying to react to this as well. I participated in a Zoom meeting of a high school group of kids, and this topic was discussed for over an hour today, and they are planning on making their own statement and applying of action as well to not only to help themselves, but to help the high school that they represent. So I see some discussions going on as a result of this, and we encourage that, and we want to be part of any or all of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Ms. Costa.
Each time I've watched the video of George Floyd being brutally murdered, the words shock and revolt come to mind, but the part for me as a mom that I don't think I will ever forget, and I can't imagine any mother in the United States or the world ever forgetting is he called that mama. And I think that will stay with me the rest of my life. Um, with each of the 11 Equity and Diversity Initiatives, 11, that San Juan has launched since 1973, we have inched forward to address the issues of inequity and racism. Inching forward is not enough. Our students, our families, our community deserve more. Black lives matter. Our Black students matter, and their families matter. I participated on Friday and Monday at the Listen to Heal Zoom calls hosted by Diana Marshall, and on Friday with Armani Easley and Michael Casper, and then on Monday with Janika Rowland and Armani Easley. And I was so grateful for the classified employees, for the teachers, for the administrators, for the parents, and the students who spoke their truth. They were so gracious about listening to other ideas, and the conversations were really beauty in motion of listening to to people's support and build on ideas and share their thoughts. There are more sessions to come that will lead to action. I know that Superintendent Kern and Cabinet and the district staff are committed to take bold actions to create real change, to eradicate racism in this district. I endorse Superintendent Kern's statement, and I will be participating in all of the follow-up sessions and the trainings to learn and to contribute. I will ask that the board receive frequent and regular updates on progress made because we know that what we focus on is what we achieve. We can't forget, and we can't go back to just inching forward. Collectively, we have the power to make change happen now, and I thank you for adding this agenda item to tonight's agenda. I think it really will make a difference for our students.
Thank you, Ms. Costa. Ms. Creason.
Thank you. I want to say that I'm just really proud to be a part of this district for so many reasons. You know, we all saw what happened to Mr. George Floyd, but let's be honest, this is one of many, 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 many. As a Black woman, being a part of the Black community, you know, consistent trauma over and over and over again. But there's something different about this moment. There's something very, very different, and I'm so proud of this district coming together and saying the words, having the hard conversations, and being uncomfortable because that's what's going to take. You know, let's be honest, we had some overt racism happen in our own district, in our own schools, many, year after year, you know, just a couple of months ago was the last thing, you know? So we all know that there's work to do. I don't think anyone's pretending that we have it all figured out, but I believe 100% that there's a strong commitment in leadership. And when I say that I mean the board, I mean the superintendent, and I mean his cabinet, to to do better and to do that with community and not do that in a silo. And I'm really happy that we are holding the roundtables. You know, my heart is still completely broken, and it's really hard to function. Yesterday was the first day I can function, so I'm not going to talk for too much more, but you know, there's real grief and mourning going on, real grief and mourning. And this statement was very timely when I read it, because I'm a part of this, right? I have a Black kid in this district, and when I saw that statement, I broke into tears because it's like, wow, he cares, Superintendent, and I know, but it's different when you see it, just like President Viascas said, words matter. And he gave us the words, and he didn't make he didn't sugarcoat anything. He said the hard thing. So I'm starting to ramble, so I'll stop. It's a heavy topic, obviously, for me and for all of us. But I'm really proud to be a part of this district, and I'm really looking forward to doing the hard work to really eradicate racism in our district and in our community.
Thank you, Ms. Creason. Dr. McKibben.
I endorse Mr. Kern's statement and and want to talk a little bit on on Monday, I was part of the the healing process that went in with our seminars, and I so appreciated being part of a small group. And and the thing, the words that came for me is just how respectful of each other we were, and the idea that we will all do this together and so forth, and we will get beyond the rhetoric. We will go beyond the 13 things that we are doing now to doing many more things. And but the thing that I think makes this very much different is that we're doing it together with parents, we're doing it together with students, we're doing it together with our partners, like Improve Your Tomorrow, and You Can, and Project Optimism. I was struck by Armani's statement on Monday. Monday, he says, "We have done a good deal, but it's not enough." And that's absolutely true. It's not enough. We've got to go forward. We've got to get beyond the record, and we've got to get to concrete things that help us move together.
Thank you, Dr. McKibben. Are there any further comments at this time from my colleagues? Or from Superintendent, Mr. Kern?
I kind of want to give you the last word on this one, but I want to just share a little bit as well. I started meeting with a group of Black and Brown men a couple of years ago. We call them our Men of Equity, and I had the chance to meet with them again today. And I'll share with you that the conversations that we have are raw. One of the gentlemen that was there today, he actually grew up in Minneapolis about a block from where this incident, and his parents still live in that area, and you could just feel the challenges that he's working through with this. But I want to say, and we've heard this, but this is going to require all of us together, but often we as white individuals sit on the side, and I want to publicly commit that we are going to move forward as a district, and we're going to take on these challenges. I won't always say the right thing, others won't, but we are committed to this work. It was interesting today as we were discussing. We at times lately have been saying how anxious we are to get back to normal. And the conversation went, you know what, for our for our Black students and families, back to normal was before this incident. And so that's almost a phrase that, as we say that, can come across as even a little offensive because it's like, no, we need to move forward. There will be a new normal. There will be a new normal in schools. There will be a new normal in our society and how we address folks, and that's our challenge is to move to a new normal. And and on Friday, we got to listen to a biracial family share, and it was really powerful at the end of the day. But there was a statement that was made that said, "Don't let this crisis go to waste." And I think we absolutely need to see this, and hopefully at some point, we look back at history as this was a really important pivot point for equality in our country and hopefully the world as well. So again, I appreciate the board board members that requested coming back and just the unification of the board as well. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Kern. At this time, is there a motion to endorse the superintendent's statement on June 1st, "Supporting Students, Families, Staff, and Community Members Against Racism"?
So this? Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Creason and seconded by Ms. Costa. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
That was unanimous. We are now at business item two, COVID-19 Operations Update. Ms. Schnapp, please begin when you are ready.
It's actually Melissa Bassinelli who's going
Oh, sorry, Ms. Bassinelli, please begin when you're ready.
Mr. Allen, when you enable my screen sharing, I will share the presentation. Didn't mean to do that. All right. Good evening, President Viascas, board members, and Superintendent Kern. Tonight, I would like to share with you a COVID-19 Operations Update. This update is a two-part in nature, with the first part focused on reporting a summary of the work completed to date to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic per our LCAP requirements. And the second part is of this presentation provides a summary of the current planning efforts for the next school year. On April 22nd, 2020, Governor Newsom issued an executive order N5620 clarifying changes to existing LCAP requirements as a result of COVID-19. With this executive order, the LCAP was delinked from the budget approval process for the fiscal year ending in June 30th, 2020, and the deadline for a one-year LCAP covering the 2020-2021 school year was moved to December 15th, 2020. In lieu of an LCAP, local education agencies are required to submit a written report describing their actions to reduce the impact of COVID-19 on children and families. This LCAP operations update is included in this overall presentation for both discussion and action. Within the operation portion of the update of this presentation, we'll be covering five key areas. As you may recall, upon school closure, we identified the following Spring 2020 goals to serve as road signs to guide us as we traveled a path not previously navigated before. These goals were to support the health and safety of our students, staff, and community, to successfully graduate every eligible senior by June 2020, to engage students in learning and mastery of standards through distance learning, and to continue to provide students with nutritious meals. When San Juan Unified Schools When San Juan Unified Schools closed for the duration of the school year to slow the spread of COVID-19, teams of district leaders, community, and labor partners implemented the actions you see on this slide to reduce the impact of the closures. As a part of our distance learning launch efforts, we implemented safe curbside breakfast and lunch meal distribution at multiple locations. We provided over 21,000 technology devices to students and worked with families to resolve gaps in internet connectivity. We directed specific actions in support of seniors, which included early reactivation of credit recovery courses, transcript analysis, follow-up, and intervention. We created a COVID-19 microsite in connection with the district's webpage to provide our parents and community with the most up-to-date information related to the changes in the instructional program as a result of COVID-19. By May 21st, there were over 70,000 visits to this microsite. We also created a parent resource hub linked to this microsite, the COVID-19 microsite, to make accessible diverse resources offered through the district, regional agencies, and community partners. The parent hub has had more than 150 online participants in virtual training, 750 views of training videos, and our parent ambassadors initiated more than 300 direct support contacts with parents. Lastly, we modified our procedures to allow for online enrollment, transfer requests, and records requests. Since March 16th, we've received close to 800 online inquiries for enrollment and/or transfers. In addition, the district-wide program changes to reduce the impact of school closures on students and families, we implemented targeted approaches to meet the needs of our English learners, foster youth, and low-income students. The NTSS team deployed student outreach efforts for students disconnected with distance learning and adapted their service model to ensure ongoing support for our targeted students at risk of being most impacted. Some additional supports provided include academic intervention specialists providing student support, utilizing computer-based academic intervention programs such as iReady and Lexia; social workers, mental health therapists, and counselors providing outreach and support for currently assigned students and also newly referred students through our district referral process; translation staff and bilingual aides reached out to students and families to help identify and reduce barriers to distance learning participation; school nurses scheduled emergency dental appointments during the shelter-in-place order, and were organizing plans to offer dental screening, eye examination, and free classes at student support centers in the fall 2020. These safety net efforts, coupled with the site-level efforts, have assisted our district in making contact with 99% of our targeted groups, including low-income, English-language learners, and foster youth. Although needing to move fast, San Juan was thoughtful about how instruction and support services were rolled out and was mindful of potential issues related to equity and access within the preparation and implementation of distance learning. As previously mentioned, it was our intent that every senior who meets eligibility requirements graduates this June and that all students engage in meaningful learning. Throughout this time, working with our labor partners, families, and site practitioners has helped us deliver high-quality learning through new learning platforms. To assist with the implementation of distance learning, we had teams of preschool through 12th-grade teachers, including special education representatives, teachers on special assignment, English language development specialists, administrators, and early childhood education staff design and implement a professional learning plan for our teachers. Additionally, we have support staff continuing to develop and curate resources for our distance learning practitioner hub. This professional learning website includes training calendars, grade level, classroom, collaboration spaces, technology training videos, drop-in support, and curriculum training videos. Resources also include supports for special education services, English language development, physical education, and visual and performing arts through distance learning. In total, the hub has been seen by over 22,000 visits with teachers and other certificated staff attending over 3,500 virtual training sessions with our technology training videos and with 23 of our technology videos having over 4,800 views. When we shifted to a distance learning model, we implemented new grading guidelines for students' grades TK through 12, which included credit, no-credit, default grading system in secondary, and growth marks in elementary. In addition to the credit, no-credit default system, students in grades 9 through 12 also have the opportunity to opt out of the credit, no-credit default system and request a letter grade. Additionally, since distance learning has begun, data has been collected to determine which students are not connected with distance learning. And student safety nets, as I previously mentioned, were enacted to make contact with students and families to eliminate barriers to engagement. The safety net process led to the connection and contact with 99% of our students and families overall, in addition to our targeted groups. Over 300,000 meals have been served to date across 27 school sites with staff equipped with safety training and personal protective equipment. We translated safety information and included it in each meal, which notified families of refrigeration needs for the meals. And additionally, interpreters assisted with the initial launch of these services to help families know more about the meal distribution program, the food safety needs, and dietary information. At the point of closure, we closed our before, during, and after-school care for students. We did provide a link to local childcare services in Sacramento County as a part of our parent resource hub. And we are currently exploring ways we might reopen services with social distancing in the summer and fall, of course, following county and state health guidelines. This past month, we've been focused on a variety of areas, one of which has been to collect feedback from staff, student, and parents. Last week, we wrapped up our family survey, which is being used as a tool to gather feedback regarding current distance learning efforts and collect interest in learning models for the 2020-21 school year. Overall, we had nearly 9,000 responses to the survey. With close to 9,000 survey responses, we saw that all schools were represented with varying degrees of participation. You can see as little as 32 respondents per school with upwards of 732 responses per school. All grade levels were represented with the most consistent representation between the grades of kindergarten through 11th grade. Lower-density schools were predominantly represented. It represents about 50% of the responses, as were respondents who spoke English as their first language. And you can see that is 96% of the responses. Grade spans were evenly represented. When participants were asked, "How satisfied are you with distance learning?", 47% reported that they were very or moderately satisfied. 27% of participants reported that they are not satisfied. High-density schools reported greater satisfaction with distance learning, with 50% reported being very or moderately satisfied. Greater satisfaction was reported in primary grades, with satisfaction decreasing as the grade levels increased. 42% of survey participants reported that their student spends an average of three to four hours a day on schoolwork in our distance learning model. And you can see that with the exception of grades TK through 2nd grade, that sentiment is consistent across most grade levels. 67% of the survey participants reported that they spend an average of one to two hours per day supporting their students' learning in our distance learning model. And you can see that this is heavily reported across the grade level bands. When asked, "What are the ways you are supporting your students' learning at home?", 88% of participants shared that they are encouraging their student. 76% reported that they talk with their student about how the learning is going. And 75% reported that they talk with their student about how they are feeling. And when given the option to mark other, participants reported that they spend time monitoring and trying to engage their student, tutoring and teaching their student, and creating assignments or work for their student. In terms of communication, 59% of respondents felt like they received just the right amount of communication, and 74% felt like the communication was very clear to moderately clear during the COVID-19 distance learning time. You can see the variability across grade level bands in terms of being informed about grades and marks, with 92% of respondents reporting that they felt informed about grades and marks in grades 9 through 12th grade. Conversely, in primary grades, more respondents felt it was easy to contact teachers, with 77% reporting that it was very easy or easy in grades TK through 2nd grade, and 75% reporting it was very easy to easy in grades 3 through 5. When asked about the challenges experienced in distance learning, the challenge that showed up the highest across the grade level bands was unclear assignments. In terms of social-emotional learning, there was a 50-50 split in respondents reporting that they were aware of supports available for their student. 58% reported that their student was very to moderately coping with the current situation. Respondents reported that their student felt like felt a part of the community was highest in the elementary grade level bands, with teacher check-ins also being reported as more frequent in elementary grade level bands. When we asked about the models, we described three. One being a traditional model of five days a week in person, another being hybrid, which, for example, could be two days in person, three days with remote learning, and another being a full-distance learning model, which would be five days of remote learning. Overall, 73% of respondents said that they would vary to moderately likely send their student to a traditional model, which is five days a week, in the fall. 67% said that they would vary to moderately likely send their student to a hybrid model. And 40% reported that they would vary to moderately likely send their student to a full-distance learning model. You can see the variability across school density, with low-density schools reporting a preference in sending their students to a traditional or hybrid model. The only variability across grade level bands was seen in the hybrid model responses, with a higher rate of preference being with respondents of secondary students. When asked, "Which of the draft options would best meet their students' and families' needs", overwhelmingly, respondents reported that the traditional model best meets their needs, with 52% to 58% preferring to be in a traditional model in the fall. This data tends to go, this data trends down as students get older. While the majority of respondents say they prefer the traditional model, you can see that we have families responding that the hybrid model and full-distance learning model meets their needs as well. 27% to 35% prefer to be in a hybrid model in the fall. This trends up as students get older. This data is similar across school density. Additionally, not on this slide, 19% reported that childcare impacts their choice, with greater impacts being reported at high-density schools and within lower grades, such as elementary school. 7% of respondents also reported to have food limitations, and the same rate of 7% expressed having housing concerns at this time. In planning for the 2020-21 school year, we really identified six strategic priorities, and I will cover them more fully. I want to just, I want to speak to the first, the top three in that, in all of our planning process, health and safety of our students, staff, and community is first and foremost, in that everything we do is, will be following the guidelines of state and local county health officials. We also see focused instruction and community building and relationships being two halves to a whole when it comes to instructing our students, as both are important and share equal importance in the instructional program. Following state and local health guidelines, we're planning to implement three learning models for fall implementation to allow choice for families. These three models include an in-person learning model. This might take the shape of a hybrid model, where students are split into smaller cohorts, potentially attending school in person for two days a week, with other days being remote learning. We are also looking at a distance learning model. We're planning for that, in which we'll include five days a week of remote learning for students. That would include synchronous, which is live, real-time instruction and services, and asynchronous activities with teachers and classmates. We are also expanding our homeschool and independent study models as a part of this three-model offering. And this will involve the expansion of our current K-8 homeschool model and our independent study program in grades 9 through 12. We just want to note that there are a few differences between the homeschool model and distance learning model. One of the key differences that is in distance learning, students have the opportunity to engage with other students during synchronous time with the teacher as a part of a classroom. Whereas at the homeschool model, students engage with the teacher and their parent. In looking at our health and safety priority, right now, we are considering factors such as social distancing in the classroom, common areas, and on school buses. We're looking at health and safety training for staff and students and safety procedures, such as protocols for when a student or staff falls ill on campus. We're looking at the necessary health and safety equipment, such as face coverings and face shields. And we're looking at facility and equipment cleaning. In terms of focused instruction, there's a couple key pieces that are in play right now that are being planned for. The first one is the essential standards guidelines development. So we, as a system, are identifying essential standards that represent the minimum that a student must learn in order to reach higher levels of learning. We're doing this across all of our grade levels and across content areas in order for us to be focused and precise in our instruction as we launch in the fall in all of our learning models. In order for an essential standard to be identified as essential, it would either be a power standard or a building block standard that's necessary for a student to master in order to be successful later in the year, be successful in the next grade level or course, or be successful across other domains and content areas. We also, right now, are focusing heavily on the identification, development, and curation of instructional videos and lessons to implement within our continuum of learning options. And so specifically, last Friday, we launched a side letter agreement with our Teachers Association, soliciting practitioners to participate in summer work that's focused on curating, developing, and providing a bank of lessons that are accessible online, so that when teachers are with students in person or in synchronous learning, they can focus on differentiation, relationship-building, and assessing learning. So as I mentioned, these bank of lessons to be developed might include instructional videos and materials, and they're developed by our practitioners. And it's our intention that these practitioners that are recruited for this, who apply for this and are identified, are best and are brightest, so that we can really build off of the great thinking and the great work within our system and be able to share that with all of our practitioners. When you consider the trauma of the pandemic and the movement to end systemic racism and bias within our country, our students now more than ever need us to prioritize community building and relationships, with the intent of listening and sharing story with each other so that we could learn from one another and build the relational trust necessary to help students reach their fullest potential. We believe that relationships are fundamental to learning and that we need daily time for community building and student socialization within the instructional day and the curriculum. And we know that we also need to prioritize school-to-home connections. Looking at the whole child, academic and social-emotional interventions and supports will be key, including- including developing and curating social emotional lessons for classroom use and setting aside time for that piece. And in addition, it's also the identification of academic interventions. A study examining the analysis of the impact of Hurricane Katrina suggests that four months of learning disruption requires two years of normal seat time to fully recover academically. So considering the disruption that we've experienced in this pandemic, we have a lot to work a lot of work to do when school resumes and we have students with us. And then in continuing to support the whole child, it's also to continue to be intentional about providing nutrition for our for our students as well as technology resources. Parent support and self-efficacy is huge. We are partners in education, particularly now more than ever as we navigate this pandemic together and work together to educate students. So we need to, we know that we need to prioritize homeschool connections within each learning model. So this includes not just the homeschool and independent study program, but also distance learning in our in-person programs. We need to continue to support parents and their development through skill building and resources along the continuum of learning options. And we need to, we know that we need to look to how we might provide before, during, and after-school care services to our students. There is a huge push-pull between the need to be thoughtful, intentional, and in alignment with the state and local health guidelines and our communities' needs to be informed, to have choice, and to make plans. And so this having transparent and timely communication is very important for us as we move forward. And so we will, we are committed to maintaining our current communication channels and continuing to look to improve them. We will continue to gather staff, student, and parent input for feedback, and we're going to continue to leverage our cultural brokers to assist us with outreach to our targeted populations. In terms of next steps, I will share with you that there's probably five or more additional slides that I could use to outline our next steps. But these the bullets on the on the slide represent just a few of them. We're going to continue to plan in groups and continue to meet and push out ideas to sites for more additional input. We're going to continue to analyze feedback from our staff, students, and parents. Like I said, we are working, we have a we have a, we have a full-force effort in terms of the development of distance learning lessons and preparation for next school year to be used in all of our learning models. And we're planning for professional learning and support, knowing that we need to continue to meet the needs of our teachers as they evolve in this method of instruction. But then also, we look to how we might continue to inform and train our parents as we navigate this together. And then we are preparing to for our facilities to reopen in August. And so this this report is shared with you by me, but it represents a variety of personnel and departments who have worked tirelessly and collaboratively in this work. And so I just wanted to recognize and support them. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to you, President Fiascas, for any questions and discussion.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bassinelli. Mr. Allen, it's time to hear visitor comments on this item. I do see two raised hands, and I'll invite you to give directions again on how to submit public comment.
Thank you, President Fiascas. If you would like to give public comment on this item, we would ask that you raise your hand if you're with us on the Zoom call today. To do that, you can press the raise hand button on a mobile device that is located at the bottom of your screen. If you are on a desktop Zoom app or web browser, that is typically at the bottom of your participants' list. Or if you've called into the meeting today, star nine on your telephone keypad will allow you to raise your hand. President Fiascas, it looks like we have five individuals in the room at this time who've raised their hand. We also have two written comments that have been submitted for this item.
Okay, we'll begin with our participants on Zoom. And I will indicate the next one speaker and then the next speakers. I'm going to call them as I see them now and the way that they've been ordered here on the on the Zoom platform and just want to remind individuals that comments are limited to two minutes. We will begin shortly with Debbie Peluka, and I apologize in advance if I mispronounce names, and I invite you to correct me, please, followed by Lance Christensen. So Debbie, please begin when you're ready.
Yes, thank you. You pronounced my name correctly. Yes, I am a teacher at Early Learning Academy Preschool, which is a 12-month, full-day preschool all year round. And we were wondering what that's going to look like for us because our parents are essential workers. They are, it is a fee-based program, and every time we have a Zoom meeting with our parents, they're very concerned because they need to get back to work, and our program is still closed. So I wanted to put a shout out out there for our parents who are very concerned and hoping that we will be able to open in the summer. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Debbie. Next up, we have Lance Christensen, followed by Teresa Arnold. Lance, please begin when you are ready. Mr. Christensen, you're on mute. There we go.
There we go. Superintendent, current and board members, I appreciate the board's thoughtful and collaborative approach with this pandemic and recognize the difficult decisions in the weeks ahead. We view your staff and the board will be thoughtful and thorough in your approach. My wife and I have four kids in three schools, and each one of them has been involved in many extracurricular activities, including sports, choir, and band, and we've seen the lack of face-to-face interaction when it's done to their mental health, and it's not good. And I appreciate all the conversation we've had with the community and and other advisory groups. But I know that if my kids, the five of them, can I have some sort of consistency and in-person contact with peers and teachers this next year, I think that the the mental, emotional, physical, social, and academic consequences will be devastating in for many years. Yes, coronavirus blindsided us all. And no, none of us were prepared for this, and trying to build this program on the fly was very difficult. But as we get come to grips with all of this, and as my wife and I dealt with the 22 different teachers that we had in three different schools for our four kids, we realized that this distance learning was not an option that could work for us. Please don't interpret any of my comments as stark or ignorance. I'm very aware of the science and the epidemiology. These viruses can be very deadly and very destructive, and we have to pay close attention to them. That's why I encourage the district, as we look through the epidemiology, to make sure that we're tracking all of the relevant science. As of June 9th, there were told 1,624 cases in Sacramento County, 61 COVID-related deaths, and none of them were under the age of 65. So I sympathize with those families that have other challenges. I hope that we can work through those issues, but we really need to get our kids back in the school as much as possible. I appreciate your time and hope you'll take these comments in consideration of your decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Christensen. Next up, we have Teresa Arnold, followed by Tanille Stewart. Ms. Arnold, feel free to begin when you're ready.
I have a child that is in IEP, in seventh and going into eighth grade. My concerns, and I would like for someone to let me know what we're going to be doing for these IEP kids. During the distance learning, there was little to no support for them to help my child in reading, writing, and math. Now he is about a year and a half behind, and even more so with this COVID-19 of us being out of school and the distance learning. I just wanted to know what we're going to do for these IEP students so that they feel like they are being taken care of. If they are going to a couple days a week and distance learning, how can we support these kids? So that my child going into high school will be ready. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Ms. Arnold. Next up, we have Tanille Stewart, followed by a participant named Gabrielle. Tanille, please begin when you're ready.
Hi, board, thank you for hearing my comments. First, I have a question. Will we be able to return to the traditional model of schooling if the stay-at-home order is lifted? That's my first question. Additionally, I have some comments. As you guys said in your own presentation, students have loss of learning and math as a result of just the summer. So now we've had distance learning for close to four months. Now we're having an additional two months of summer, so over half a year. And you guys said one to two years of loss of education that it's going to take for them to catch up. And it's being proposed by state educators that we not return to a full day of schooling. And I have great concerns regarding this. The unequal access to all students based on economics, based on parentage at home, based on daycare options, this is an unacceptable option that our students would return to school and only have distance learning or a hybrid model as an opportunity for them. If individuals would like to stay home and do distance learning or hybrid model, then I recommend provide teachers specific to that, and the rest of the students be allowed to return to the traditional format of schooling because there are many parents that feel strongly that our students should be able to learn in the consistent environment that they previously have been allowed. As a parent who has a student with an IEP and a student with a 504, this has exacerbated my children's ability to learn, and I am very fortunate in the ability to support them in their education daily. But it has been exhausting. The inconsistency of learning available from the teachers, from the school district, from the IEP department has been ridiculous, and it's not acceptable that this would be continued as a model for our students. So it has taken hundreds of years for our education system, especially California's, to get to the point that it's at, and we're still behind from the rest of the country. So it's not okay, and the rest of the world, really, that we're even considering possibly lessening the amount of hours students will receive in learning next year and insisting that.
Ms. Stewart, you are at your two-minute limit. I'm going to have to ask you to conclude your remarks.
I just don't want them to continue to only learn via online. It's not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Next, we have Gabriel, followed by Michelle Henry. Gabriel, please begin when you are ready.
It will be one moment for Gabriel, who is on an older version of the Zoom platform. So we need to do a little fancy work to allow him or her.
Thank you. My name is actually April. I don't know what is. Hear me?
There we go. Yeah.
Okay, so my name is April. I'm a parent. I have two students at one at Carriage, one going to Sylvan. My hardest difficulty with the whole situation was the Chromebooks that we were provided did not work well. The the volume didn't work, the the all the things about the computer were not working. So if you are giving us no choice but distance learning, we need equipment that actually works and does what we need it to do. Additionally, when will we have this information? Because I work from home, and it gravely impacted my ability to do my job, and I need to be able to plan for next full year for my own job. So sooner we can get the information, the better parents and families can prepare for that. And then also, the other parent who had the concerns with the IEP, I agree. I do have a son on an IEP, and his learning has actually had regression, and he did not accomplish much during this distance learning. So that was a huge concern for those special ed students as well. That's all.
Thank you very much for joining us. Next up, we have Michelle Henry, followed by Nikki Martazian. Michelle Henry, please begin when you're ready.
Thank you. While I agree that being in the classroom is the best scenario, one of my questions was, do we have any statistics showing outside being in the classroom? It sounds like the hybrid model is favored. On the surveys where they told, parents told what hybrid would look like, as I think that may sway opinions because of work and other factors. As with what the other person said, I also questioned how it will work for special ed and will high school where they have single-subject teachers, if we cannot go from class to class, how is that going to work? And then if we are a hybrid and there's two days in person and three asynchronous, which is live teaching, how are the teachers going to meet the needs of the students in their classroom? And asynchronous at the same time because they will be teaching? So I want to know more of what that hybrid looks like to be able to make a better decision.
Thank you very much, Michelle. Next up, we have Nikki, followed by Veronica.
Hi, can you hear me? Yeah, okay, good.
Yes, please begin when you're ready.
Um, my son's birthday is at the end of August, and he's kind of on the cusp of just starting either kindergarten or we're going to keep him at preschool for another year. And we were trying to decide that, and we were supposed to hear of whether or not he got into his school, the waiting list school that he was on for the lottery sometime, but then all of this crazy happened. And I was wondering if there's any updates or when the enrollment office will open for those of us who are kind of just starting school and are kind of trying to get our feet wet on all of that information of, you know, if there are they cutting class sizes? Are wait lists from the lottery not being considered because we don't know what the model is? And when when that information will become available as well?
Thank you very much, Nikki. Next up, we have Veronica Allen Alvier. Please begin when you're ready. You're currently still on mute, Veronica. There we go, now we can hear you.
How are you doing? Thank you for having this board meeting. I am a bilingual instructional assistant in elementary school, and my question was, how is the list in their leaning, the distant learning platform going to help our ELS student and also the special education? Because they need to be exposed to the language, the English learners, and also special education kids. They need, they need constancy, and they need the support, the specific support to each child. So that was my concern. Thank you.
Thank you very much for for joining us. At this time, I don't see any other hand raised, any other hands raised on the Zoom, excuse me, on the Zoom platform. Mr. Allen, are there any public comments that have been received electronically?
We do have two comments that have been received via our forum, President Fiascas. Our first one is from John Allen. John writes, if the school board adopts the two days in class and three days distance learning, can the two days be together to make it easier for parents to get time off for work? Perhaps have the students go Monday and Tuesday, clean on Wednesday, and then class on Thursday and Friday. Our second comment is from Chelsea Olirak. I'm a, I'm supportive of students going back five days a week. As a dual-income household, like many in our school district, a hybrid model will fill our children when we all go back to work. Although a child would not be on campus full-time, children will not be home. They will be at childcare centers with many more than a typical classroom, overall increasing points of contact. DL expectations will continue on the at-home days, but will not be started until after parents and children get home. I cannot imagine starting school work in the evening alongside preparing dinner and getting them to bed at a reasonable hour. While the school board is looking at what is best for the school district, please take in consideration what would be best for families as well. And I'm just verifying that we have no last-minute submissions, and we do not. So that concludes our public comment, President Fiascas.
Thank you very much. At this moment, we will transition to board member questions and discussion. So I will be calling in dice seating order as I have done in the past, and we will begin with Mr. Hernandez. Mr. Hernandez. And we will begin with Mr. Hernandez.
I don't really have a question, more of a comment, that I appreciate the effort, try to reach out to our community and get to what we're really thinking at this time. And I know that our thoughts are across the board as to what this may look like or what, you know, hybrids may look like. But I just want to appreciate the effort, Professor Nelli, and the survey as we did, we, you know, trying to figure out exactly what's best for our students and our community and our parents. And I, and I just want to say thank you. And as we move forward, that we continue to reach out, to be transparent as possible and to help them with whatever transition we're moving forward. So more of a state than anything else.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hernandez. Ms. Costa.
I also, I want to thank staff for the report and also for the opportunity to hear what our parent community is thinking through the survey. I'm hoping that we can do more outreach to our EL population and our low-income families so that you have an idea of all of the population. I really sincerely appreciate Dr. Calvin. I sent an email and asked about the 1% contact with 99% of this foster youth, EL students and low-income students. And I asked, what about the 1%? And her response really made me feel much better that the district is keeping a close pulse on what's happening in our community. I think Superintendent Kern said something that was really important at the SPAC meeting last week. He said that the amount of time that we have been out of school and shelter in place is approximately the same amount of time as from the close of school until the opening of school. And when you think of all the twists and turns that have occurred in this period of time, I think there will be other things that staff will be working with and adjusting and trying to get more feedback. So I appreciated that. I think two ahas that I had. One that was a surprise. I was surprised at the high percentage of students who spent less than three hours a week on instruction. And I think when we talk about learning loss and how many hours kids are normally in school and the fact that we had students spending less than three hours in a week. I also thought about the teachers that I have done Zoom lessons with and conversations with them saying that they're spending 40 to 60 hours a week planning those lessons. I was feeling pretty sad that the amount of time was not reciprocated in terms of learning. The other item that I think was of most concern to me is on Slide 17, when it asks, "How well are students coping?" And 41% of our students at the time of this survey were slightly or not coping. And you think about what's happened in the last two weeks now. And that was after the survey was taken. So I wonder how our kids are coping at this point in time. And we'll be interested in hearing more from staff about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Costa. Ms. Creason?
Thank you. I first want to address the parents on the line. I'm not sure if everyone knows that I am living this with you. I'm not loving it motivating a 13-year-old. Let's just say it's an incredible challenge. So I hear you. I hear you. And everything that you're living, I'm going through it with you. And it's really hard. I mean, just today, I was on a conference call. My son had water all over, and he's 13, water all over the bathroom. I had to deal with, I get it. I work full-time, we're a two-income home as well. I have, this is what I call my night job. I get it. So I just want to assure you, I am eager to send him back as soon as possible. But we have to do it safely because his safety comes first and your kid's safety comes first too. And we also have to adhere to the guidelines. But just know that I'm with you and I feel it's time for him to go back to school. So that said, I heard, you know, I just want to reiterate what I heard during the presentation, which was there's going to be, they're working towards three options. And one of those options did say five days. So I just want to reiterate that's on this, that is part of the plan. We're hearing you and that's what we're trying to do. I know that as soon as we have more information about how that's actually going to work, we're going to share it. So know that that's coming. You know, we got thrown into this with no choice. You know, the world turned upside down on all of us, not just our district, not just K-12, not just California. The world got turned upside down. And we did the best that we could very quickly. But now we're having a little time to be more thoughtful and to build in choice. And I'm really excited that we're looking at this three, this model where there's options. You know, some kids are actually thriving, not mine. But there are children that are really thriving in this, which surprised me, but it makes sense. I'm hearing both sides from parents, you know? And this really, to me, creates a bright spot. We can't put all the kids in one box and expect them to learn one way. And this is something we've been talking about for a long time. So we've actually been forced to look at learning and education very differently so that we're able to deliver it in a way that meets an individual child's needs. And so I'm really excited at looking at these three options. And you know, I want to show, I'm going to be on a call with the governor's office tomorrow. In higher education, we're having the exact same conversation. My day job is in workforce development and higher ed is part of that conversation. So we're going to be having a conversation with them. And I just want to point out, this is not, again, unique to this district, our K-12. I'm sure a lot of folks have seen, even colleges are talking about what they're going to do for distance learning. So just know that this isn't us as SJUSD making these decisions in a silo. It's something that we're all trying to work through and do the best that we can. And you know, the quality piece, the quality education piece is key. And we're working towards that. So I also want to say, I'm excited about another bright spot that we are not, we're looking beyond time in seats. So I hear that there's concern, and I get it, you know? I get it. I understand why we're there. But you know, we, in other conversations, we're looking at actual learning, competency, being able to demonstrate a competency, not just moving on because you spent X time in a seat. So I'm excited that we're looking at that too. You know, it's not just about time in seats. And we know that this turns into a budgetary question. I'm glad that we're having this expanded conversation because I think that it's going to, in the long run, offer more choice and possibly improve the current funding mechanisms and formulas that we're living under. I also want to say that I have also heard from several special, families receiving special education, students receiving special education, that they need more support. And I just want to say, I do hear you. And my hope is that in the coming weeks, that we can develop some, you know, develop more and just reach out to our families and see what we could do, what they need. And I know that we have a team that cares very deeply and will probably be doing that. I will pay more attention to that. And I do hear you. I also want to say, I hear you when you say the tech isn't working. So I would love to see some more communication on what to do if it's not working. You know, what's the process for trading it in for something that works? So that you're not stuck with something that doesn't work. I hear that too. And I also just wanted to say, there were some things that came out, you know, I'm sorry, I had to look back at my notes. There were some folks that had very specific questions during your public comment. And I just want to, I always have a feeling in my heart, I feel very bad that we can't respond to you due to the Brown Act very specifically as you're talking. And just know that that's not as ignoring you. And it's my understanding that staff will reach out to you as they can on things that they can help you with. But I also want to invite you to send an email. There's only so much we could do during a board meeting, during public comment. But use our email too. Because we can get you to the right person to get you the help and support you need as you work through this, as we all work through this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Creason. Dr. McKibben?
Once, one more time. Thank you very much for the presentation. It was, it was filled with, with all kinds of really good information. But one of the, one of the things that happens when you have all kinds of information is you end up with more questions than you do with answers. There are a number of things that I'm very excited about. I'm really excited about the, the bank of new lessons. I'm excited that we're going to do things with distance learning and get better at it and experiment with it. And that's the thing. And do what frankly, other countries have done with it in terms of, of making their schools better. I'm excited at some of the prospects that we can have in terms of changing the kinds of things that we dwell on in our classrooms. Like in terms of spending more time on issues like teaching children their, their whole process of learning how to learn rather than learn stuff. You know, sometimes we spend too much time trying to figure out whether we met a standard or not and not enough time on, do they understand how they got there? This provides us a real opportunity. On Slide 21, that it appears that there are, that the, if you count the partnership academies, there are at least four different kinds of things. One of the things that I haven't heard talked about anyplace is that are we, are these kinds of distance, is each school going to have a center or a place where the distance learning happens and works like that? And people who have disparate expertise? Are there some schools that are just going to be hybrid schools? Are there going to be some schools that are just going to be traditional models? Frankly, the question begs the question is, is the neighborhood school notion in this school, in this district that values choice extinct? Or are we going to have specific schools that are magnets for different kinds of service delivery models? I think these are questions that we have to ask. With, with San Juan being the largest employer in this area, and we have to be concerned with indeed, are we going to provide different kinds of things? With the, the whole point of if, if our, if our students are in, some of our students are in a five-day-a-week distance learning model, how many of those parents will feel that they have to be there to do that? Which indeed, looks at the economic system of our area. Do we have a way with our schools to turn, for example, multipurpose rooms into many distance learning areas? So the kids actually do come to school, but, but so that we can achieve social distancing, can we use different kinds of configurations in our school to, so that we can have this distance learning site? And, and teachers who are indeed particularly proficient at that? Again, to differentiate our staff in terms of their skills is another very powerful thing that we might be able to get out of this. One of the things that, that I heard in the presentation today and, and I've read before, was the comparison to Katrina and taking two years to recover from that. I think about over the number of refugee students that we, we have had come into our school district over the years. And in many cases, those kids were out of school for two full years and, and hadn't, and in some cases, hadn't had school for that whole time. We are in some way, if indeed we, we do have a spike and go back and have to close schools again, we may be experiencing a similar kind of thing. This whole thing is, I'm very, some of the parents talked about the coping mechanism. And I believe Ms. Costa did too. We have got to, the school is the refuge for so many of the kids. And one of the things that I think we have to look at is the risk of learning loss against the risk of health. How much flexibility as a district and as individual schools do we have in terms of bringing kids back and that sort of thing? We ought to use all kinds of masks and shields and, and all kinds of, of safety kinds of things. But one of the things that we have to realize is that we must balance so that the learning loss is not lost because we were too overly cautious. I know that, that a number of my board member, board member partners disagree with me on that. But, but we've got to, one of the things that this school district does is it asks the tough questions. And, and we have to ask these questions about risk and relatively gain and relative danger of are we going to lose a generation of kids? I worry about that a lot. And I'll stop now because I'm making myself depressed.
Thank you, Dr. McKibben. I do have a couple of questions and then probably just some more remarks. But I think I'll just start with the remark that we, I, we'd certainly heard it during our comments and particularly those from parents that are very desperate for answers and direction right now. And we fully understand that. I am not a parent, but I can only imagine, and I have heard of the significant complications that go into planning, planning your life, planning your life around work, planning your life, whether two parents are able to work from home or not, and where to make sure that your kids can remain in a safe and caring environment during this, you know, absolutely crazy public health crisis. And I think we desperately want to be able to give you more answers and certainly on a quicker timeline. We exist in a very fluid state and community. And I think any decisions we would make right now, I can almost guarantee you would be premature because we don't know what our environment will look like two weeks from now, much less two months from now. And that's why I am glad to see the recommendation here that really does have a continuum. Because I think the bottom line is, we need to be able to prepare for and have our communities and our schools exist on a continuum where there are increases in cases and then decreases in cases, et cetera. Because what I think we cannot do again is just this, this really just hard stop to points of contact and relationships and education and curriculum that was too detrimental and likely parallels the public health crisis itself in terms of the mental health crisis and behavioral health and emotional health crises that we now find ourselves in. And so it's my hope that, you know, we, that the state will continue to support and monitor and provide resources for all of the other spectrum that gauge the health of our community, which includes testing and contact tracing and hospital capacity and all of that. And I know it seems, might seem a little bit unrelated, but it's not because it really does give us a measurement of health for our community throughout. And quite frankly, if we continue and can manage and provide for all of those factors, then we are as a whole existing in a healthier community and can have a little bit more what we're discussing as kind of risky environments, but where everybody really does, is able to be in more of a position to kind of resume classes and make sure that we've got room for everybody on campus in a safe way. And so I continue to be confident. Now that being said, I mean Sacramento County itself, there is kind of a list of counties that ebb and flow off of the, the list of, that the state keeps in terms of where they are positioned in this overall kind of public health for the whole community. And right now, we've got a, we're leaning more towards a significant stress on our hospital, on our hospital capacity. And that affects our community as a whole. And the other item I wanted to just point out, I know Sacramento County website indicates that there have only been 61, that there has been 61. that there have only been 61, that there has been 61 deaths in Sacramento County. And each one of those are families that are impacted and a story behind that. And that it also notes that it's individuals over the age of 65. But if you read the fine print on that, it's individuals 65 and/or with an underlying health condition. So it's actually a really broad category that include a variety of age groups. But that's all to say, we can't just dismiss the number because it's a subset of our population. We exist in a full community. And while it may not impact kids that much, we have a whole community that serves our kids and we have our staff and we have our certificate, certificated employees and our classified employees and everybody else that kind of keeps all of this entire community running. We have to be able to provide for all of those. And so that's why it's such a hard moving target. But I trust that we'll be able to find the appropriate balance that truly does prioritize the health and safety of our entire community. And that includes the physical and behavioral health of all of our students and their learning and all of these other pieces. And truly find the appropriate balance for both the students and the adults in our communities that, that serve them. And so there's just, it's COVID time, you know, one day is a whole week. There's still a lot of time here. And there's still guidance being come, you know, being distributed from, from the county and from the state and from other trusted resources. But the, everyone is working with a moving target here. And so the more flexible system that we build, I think that's where we're going to really find more success. I do want to raise the question about kind of the, the item that was pointed out on the malfunctioning devices. And I'm just curious what our plan is now and what our plan might be going forward to kind of address those items because that's obviously going to be a significant piece as we continue to move forward. So I'll stop there before I answer, before I ask a couple of other questions.
So we have, even on our parent hub, we have some information there about how if folks had devices that weren't working, how they could reach out to tech services and get support. We had tech services directly supporting families. And we actually were giving additional devices. Folks would return devices and we would give those back. So there was a fair amount of information on there. It sounds like we needed to do, do a better job on that. You know, one of the things that I kind of want to speak, and you guys have all alluded this to as well, and then Paula, I'll try and answer any other questions you have. Everybody wants answers right now. I want answers now. I want to be able to give folks answers right now, but there is so much unknown. The thing to do is to go back to five days a week because that's how we've always operated. But if we're unable to do that and we're not planning for other things, we're going to get to the fall and we're going to have wasted a summer and then, you know, we're going to be in the same boat when we were rushing to do this. And Dr. McKibben alluded to this, identifying teachers to provide high quality instruction and lessons this summer. I've got other superintendents reaching out to me saying, hey, once you guys develop that, could we use those lessons? Because they're seeing that as a model that could really work to provide consistent, high quality instruction across the board. So we all want answers. And it's, it is so frustrating because I usually like to have the information that I need to give people answers. When I speak with other superintendent, trying to figure out the fall is like trying to solve a Rubik's Cube that has no solution. It really is. It's like there is no solution, but we keep twisting, we keep turning, we're doing the best we can. And so again, I would ask folks to be, to be patient with us. We are looking at possibly opening up some of our discovery clubs this summer based upon the guidelines that the governor has set forth. So that's something we're hoping, hoping to do. And then we are hoping to communicate out to all of our parents probably next week, what these multiple options could look like. Because we have parents saying, I'm not sending my kid back until there's a vaccine. You know, and, and so we're going to have to have all these options. So I, I hope what the community has really heard is that we have listened and we have tried to, to know that there are individual needs. Now, if you're saying right now, well, the only answer I want is five days a week, I can't give that to you right now because based on the guidelines of the state, the county, you can't fit that many students into a classroom. But again, I think as Paula mentioned, we have no idea what's going to change in the coming weeks, but we want to be as prepared as we possibly can for the fall when that comes. So any other questions you have that I could try and answer now, Paula, I'd be happy to.
Sure. I think just an, an update to the extent that we have one on kind of the enrollment pieces. I think typically at this point, parents have a little bit more information and some of that might have been on pods. So I'm just curious if you can talk a little bit to that. Enrollment, enrollment pieces, so enrollment lists, et cetera.
Yeah, the enrollment center is actually going to open up next week. I went and visited the enrollment center, or I'm sorry, is opening, did I say next week, last week? Okay, I went and visited last week. It's going to be opening up next week. Deputy Bassinelli and myself, we're on a Zoom meeting with our enrollment techs today. So I think that will start happening, you'll, you'll start to see a little bit of movement there. But again, the biggest unknown is we don't know exactly what percentage of parents are going to choose to send their kids and not send their students. So we don't know where the space is available. We are heading into a time where, where it's already challenging to try and staff schools with numbers and figure out if there are places. This year is going to be like no other year we've ever faced with. We're going to come to an agreement real soon with the teachers association that we'll, we're likely going to have to move teachers after the school year starts. We're trying to identify where we'll have teachers that are in those vulnerable categories that won't be able to come back to those schools and may have to either instruct via homeschool or the distance learning piece. So I want the community to know as well, all of that is happening. We meet weekly with the leadership of the teachers association, a small group of our teaching and learning folk, myself and their leaders. That'll take place tomorrow morning at eight 30 for two hours. And there are meetings happening throughout the week where we're having those conversations that, that are going on and on on that. So that's important for folks to just be aware of that.
I think the other piece, and we'll probably see it as we, as it's become a little bit more refined, but I just, I didn't see a whole lot of differentiation between grade levels and how we operate and more of the elementary levels versus the higher levels. And I don't know, there's, I, I don't anticipate there being an answer. I just, I would, they're, they're different learning environments. And so I would, you know, expect and anticipate that while as we kind of develop the spectrum of options, that we're making sure that each type, each kind of, the needs of our students are being met in an age appropriate way.
Well, and I'll even share some of the questions about special ed, for example, and when we talk about one size doesn't fit all, that may look very different at some of the schools that already have classes, smaller class size. When you look at a school like Ralph Richardson or Laurel Ruff, we may be able to do some things at those sites that we're not able to do at other sites just because of social distancing. We're looking at all those. When, when Melissa was sharing that we're looking for folks to, to work on those essential standards and develop those lessons this summer, we're talking about 83 people. So at each grade level, two ALA, two math, those other subjects as well. We're even trying to find somebody this summer who will work on virtual field trips. So if we have kids not able to experience some of those things, maybe they'll be able to do that. We're real, we're, we're trying to create, and so every level, Paula, will have, you know, teachers that are focused in that area, providing that instruction for really that distance learning, possibly that, that homeschool piece. It, it'll overlap into all of those areas.
Great, thank you. And I think I just want to close on, it's, it's really the desire, I think if all of us had our ways, we would have all of the resources and all of the space that we would need. And it really is, you know, despite all of that, our goal to get as close to every kid in the classroom as possible. Just, you know, recognizing all of the different kind of constraints that, that exist and we'll have to work with and all of that and, and figure that out.
No, one last comment I would make, and I would, I would encourage those members of the community who have, who are on this meeting call today to, to stick around and look, and when Mr. Stevens presents the budget for next year, realize we're, we're heading into one of the most tumultuous budget times that this district is facing many, many years as well. So we're, to, to face, you know, kind of one challenge like that, we're really facing three significant challenges in our district. And, and we will try and continue to be as, as clear with folks as we can and communicate when we're, when we're able. And I'll leave it at that.
And as Ms. Bassinelli mentioned at the beginning of the, of the presentation, you know, one of the changes in the executive orders was how we approached the LCAP. And in lieu of that process, for now, we do have to adopt an operations written report. And so that is the action item before us at the moment, just as a reminder for my colleagues, but also for individuals who are still with us. The operations written report really is a report of what's happened to date. And so at this point, what we're taking action on is that item. We are not taking action on items for the future. So with that, is there a motion to adopt the COVID-19 operations written report? So move.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Costa and seconded by Mr. Hernandez. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 That was unanimous. We are now at item I three, the Choices Charter COVID-19 Operations Update. Ms. Flagler, please begin when you are ready.
Yes, good evening, President, good evening, President Viasquez, members of the board and Superintendent Kern. We are joined tonight by the Director of Choices Charter School, Mr. Tony Otto, who will now present to the board the Choices Charter School COVID-19 Operations Update. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for having me here tonight. It's, it's been interesting watching this meeting develop on Zoom. I've had many Zoom meetings with my staff and they're just so much fun, aren't they? Before I begin, I'd just like to, I, I want to let you know a few things. This is our, our last week of school instruction. And next Tuesday, we'll be having our drive-through graduation Tuesday morning outside at a, at a nice site. And I wanted to thank Dr. McKibben for his kind and thoughtful words that he recorded for our graduates. And I also wanted to thank Superintendent Kern for authorizing the issuance of those diplomas. We're looking forward to, to, to a nice ceremony outside and just, just wanted to share in the, in the spirit of, of this graduation season, we'll be, we'll be handing these out to our graduates. I don't know if you can see all the way through there, but they'll, they'll be getting their commemorative COVID-19 face mask, graduation mask. So anyway, let's go ahead and share the screen and we'll get started here. So San Juan Choices Charter, where are, there we go. San Juan Choices Charter was uniquely, I suppose, arranged and set up for a situation like this. Our program is designed for distance learning and our curriculum is based online already. So our teachers and our students were already used to distance learning. The biggest impact I think that we had on our program was the fact that we do have a hybrid model and the daily or the once weekly class meetings that our teachers and students were used to had to stop. So a lot of the, a lot of the relationships that we build with our kids suffered in that, in that way. But as a, as a public charter school, free public charter school, we had already been distributing technology to students who needed it. And we'd already handed out 30, 35 Chromebooks and laptops to students. When this crisis hit, we did start to distribute more. We did hand-delivered and I drove out to homes, technology for kids, about another dozen or so. Families were impacted when parents had to stay at home and work. And so the, the machines that students were using when the parents were at work are not available. So, so we had a, we had a distribution and we distributed those to their homes. We also assisted with, with helping them out with hotspots whenever we could and pointing them in the direction of where they could find reduced pricing on internet, internet connectivity. So we were proactive in making sure that all of our students, even though they had been at-home online learners already, making sure that the situation that came up did not disturb, disturb their learning. Other materials were distributed. We, we, you know, to get started, for example, our special ed students, some of them were still working in paper and out of textbooks. And so we made sure that we distributed those materials until we could get things going online for them as well. And so really the, the transition to online independent learning wasn't too difficult. Our biggest focus, of course, was our senior class and making sure that those kids received everything that they possibly could, needed so that they graduate on time and participate in our, in our graduation coming up next week. And so our eighth graders are promoting tomorrow. We created a video for them instead of our regular in-person eighth grade promotion. We have a, a video presented, prepared for them that they participated in. Some of them recorded their own video clips. So that's kind of exciting too. Meeting the needs of English learners and low-income foster youth, we continue to provide as much academic intervention support as possible. Most of our teachers participated in Zoom classrooms or Zoom instruction weekly with most of their students. We had one teacher that by the end of this week will actually have conducted over 80 individual Zoom in private lessons with their students. Other teachers would be meeting twice a week for our AP classes so that they would be prepared for the AP exams. And so we, we really were reaching out to make sure that we had, had that connection with our kids. We want to make sure that they had access to the critical resources, to lots of different outreach. So we did do a lot of other home visits as well when, when we needed to. Zoom meetings and a lot of curriculum enhancement that we added into our online curriculum. We found programs such as H5P, which enables a teacher to take a video and insert questions and responses within the videos themselves. And so we created more interactivity between the online, in the online instruction so that the kids would have a little more, a little more activity, a little more interaction in, in their learning. And we continue to service our foster youth through lots and lots of connections and phone calls and online visits with those kids to make sure that they got everything that they needed as well. So the high-quality distance learning really is our support through our regular curriculum. Because of a, of a contract expiration, we were actually already transitioning into a new online curriculum to start next year. And so we were able to pilot some of that curriculum with our kids this year and actually found out it worked even better. The curriculum that we're piloting and we're, we're going to start using this summer and in the fall offers multiple levels within a curriculum, a grade level curriculum from different providers. It's like a, it's like a broker. And so we can take one set of, of a curriculum from one provider, and if we need to do some intervention, we can actually reach out and grab curriculum from either a lower level for, for remediation or from a similar grade level, but a different way of presenting so that we can reach kids in a different way, that they can learn in the best way that they possibly can. So that's been a, that's been a great, a great assist for us in piloting those courses. Development of supplemental curriculum is ongoing with us. It's something that we do regularly, but this really forced our hand to start looking at different creative ways to do this. So even in some of our hands-on courses, our music courses, our art courses, our robotics course, we were able to deliver materials out to kids and continue online instruction through those Zoom meetings and through the online curriculum. We did follow, at least we started to follow some of the grading guidelines that, that you, our, our board put out. We definitely wanted to make sure that our students weren't going to be hurt. Now, we were able, because, because our curriculum was, was online, March 13th, site closed, March 16th, we start our, our next week of instruction. So kids really were receiving the same curriculum that they would have been receiving on the day that the site was closed. So that was definitely an advantage for, for us and for our kids, but that's, that's how our program works. Providing school meals, because we are a dependent charter to San Juan Unified, we are not even legally able to be our own we are not even legally able to be our own food service authority. And therefore, we make sure our students and our families knew where all the San Juan food distribution places were. We started serving lunch this year through San Juan Nutrition Services. And so we wanted to make sure that the students who had started to count on that still had the access. So lots and lots of communication to make sure that students were getting the meals, the lunches that they needed. Supervision of students really wasn't something that we had to deal with because we're an independent study model. Parents and students knew that the majority of their learning, 80% or more, was going to be taking, taking place independently at home. The one thing again that we missed was access for our students to our, to our computer lab and our tutoring services that we have five days a week. That was a little bit tough for some of our kids. They really started to depend on that. But we did everything we could to make that online, available online. Planning on for 2021, boy, there are so many times I was glad I wasn't you, Mr. Kern. Because I can't even imagine, you know, I've got 319 students and having to deal with 40,000 odd, you know, students in a district, boy. But we're looking at the health and safety. Yesterday, as many of you probably know, the state superintendent conducted a webinar with the latest newest guidelines for reopening schools in the fall. The emphasis being, I think, what we got out of it, really four things, distance learning, hand washing, cleaning facilities and masks. Because the way our school is set up and our classes are set up, the social distancing shouldn't be too much of a problem, assuming that we, that we return in the fall, because our class sizes are pretty small. And so we'll, we'll be able to accommodate that pretty easily and probably be able to continue our hybrid independent study model with the classroom support. We're still waiting federal, state and county reopening guidelines as they, as they happen in the future because I'm pretty certain that yesterday was not the final decision. We'll probably get more, more instruction and more, more direction later on this summer. And of course, as, as was mentioned, Mr. Stevens will be presenting the district budget situation. We're also evaluating our budget priorities based on what the new guidelines are going to require us to provide for our students and families. So we've been fortunate to build up a pretty substantial reserve. And so I think we'll be in pretty good shape for a year or two if we need to. But I'm hoping that the economy will, will, will get strong again and we won't have to worry too much about the budget situation in the future. Next steps, yeah, we're, we are also conducting staff feedback, family's feedback, student feedback. We utilize that to determine what kind of graduation model the seniors wanted to have. We're, we're also looking at getting information throughout the summer and looking at that data from our families to see how we can better serve their needs. One of our goals as an independent study program is to help our families and our parents become better independent study parents. And that's been a focus this year and we've tried to help them maneuver and guide their way through helping their students who are learning at home independently. And then we'll continue to develop supplemental curriculum throughout the summer, getting ready to implement our, our new curriculum this summer and in the fall. So that, I think pretty much does it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Odo. That was very comprehensive. Ms. Flagler, did you have anything else to add at the conclusion there? Or should I move to checking for public comment?
Go ahead and check for public comments.
Mr. Allen, do we have any visitor comments on this item?
At this time, we've not received any written visitor comments on this item. If there's anybody still in the meeting with us who would like to make a comment, we'd ask that you raise your hand at this time. You can do so by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen if you're on a mobile device or the raise hand button at the bottom of the participants, participants screen if you are on a desktop implementation of Zoom. It looks like we do have one individual with a raised hand.
Indeed, I see Tenille Stewart with a raised hand. So Tenille, please begin when you are ready.
Hi, yeah, just, I'm wondering, is there going to be an expansion of the Choices option? Basically because from my understanding, you guys are at your max capacity. So are you guys expanding the number allowed to go to you and choose your facility next year? Because I know in parent discussions I participated in, a lot of people are considering greatly looking towards your guys' curriculum because it's a tried and true model versus potentially a distance learning option offered by the school district that really we have no knowledge about and sort of being beta-tested on our children.
President Viasquez, am I allowed to answer a question with Brown Act?
Yeah, I'm just going to make sure really quick that there aren't any further ones, any further public comments at this, at this time. Typically, we go through our board questions. Is that okay if either in the course of those questions or at the remainder, if there are none, if you address that at that time, Mr. Odo?
Okay, sure. Thank you.
Okay, so just quickly, we'll see, do any of my colleagues have any questions at this time? It's hard to see. I'm, I'm going to ask you to verbally indicate if you do, as we have our screen share. I cannot see you. No, seeing, no questions at this time. Seeing none. Okay, Mr. Odo, feel free to respond.
Okay, we've been looking at our capacity in ways that we can increase things while still maintaining the site that we have. We love the site at Billy Mitchell. We feel, we feel that we ended up at about 319 in March and we feel we could probably expand that to about 340 and still keep the same staffing within our budget right now. So we will be able to expand our enrollment offerings a little bit more for, for the fall. I hope that answers.
Thank you, Mr. Odo. And I just wanted to make sure, Dr. McKibben, did you have any question? I didn't hear a verbal no from you, so I wanted to make sure you had an opportunity if, if desired. Dr. McKibben? I see you on our attendee list, Dr. McKibben. Are you available? Okay, we'll take that as no comment or question. Is there a motion to adopt the Choices Charter School COVID-19 Operations Written Report?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Hernandez. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Ms. Costa. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 I don't hear Dr. McKibben.
I think we'll call that an exception at this point then.
Dr. McKibben is having some technical difficulties and is not currently on the call.
Okay, so that is a affirmative four to zero vote with one abstention.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Odo. We are now at business item four, adoption of the 2021 budget. Mr. Stevens, please begin when you are ready.
Thank you. Am I unmuted? Can people hear me?
Yep, we're good, Ken. We can hear you. Thank you.
Tonight, the superintendent is recommending that the board hold a public hearing, which has been appropriately advertised as required by law. That's not me.
I, there we go. Please proceed.
Thank you. The superintendent's recommending that we discuss and adopt the proposed budget for fiscal year 21 next year, including staffing standards, the use of the education protect, protection account, EPA funds, the substantiation of excess reserves, and also I'm asking for your approval of revisions for the current year budget 2019-20. I'll make a brief presentation and then answer questions. I would like to recognize, I think we did have some staff in the meeting tonight. We have our director, Phil Doldalow, I think Barbara Gross, fiscal manager. We might have some other folks. I just want to publicly recognize their efforts. This was my 29th budget to, to propose for adoption in my career as a CBO. My ninth at San Juan. And I, I would say not in the top tier of my favorites. But I'm reminded of the phrase that my friend Ron Bennett used to, used to say, that this budget is approximately, approximately right and exactly wrong. And I think that is very true this evening. It has been frustrating for several reasons. One is we lost a position due to staffing reductions in the budget department, a very talented budget analyst, which made it more difficult for our budget staff. Not only do we have insufficient funds, but we have a lot of question marks and uncertainty about our funding. So this is the budget that we have for this evening to present to you based on the planning factors and assumptions that we kind of locked into through three weeks ago. Obviously, things change every week, if not every day. Normally, when we present a budget, the most accurate year is the first year of the budget. And then we, then we have less accuracy in the out years. This year, it's a little bit different. I think I would say that the budget that is the least accurate is fiscal year 21, 2020-21, because we still do not know of some of the one-time stimulus dollars that may help us prop our budget up next year. I do want to remind the board of the core commitments that they have adopted. Obviously, these are commitments not only to financial resources, but also human resources, which are equally as important to our district. You know, in times like this, and I think this is my fourth recession, obviously probably the most severe that I've experienced in my career. It's not hard to recognize and respect our employees and our human resources. We're people business and it doesn't take a lot of effort. And I look for ways to be creative, to not only recognize them and respect them, but also look for win-win ways to reward them. And sometimes that doesn't even cost the district any money. I've presented a few of those ideas already. And I hope that the district can embrace that, that posture to do that. That would be my hope. Here's our core messages. As I've said, this really is a tentative provisional budget, I would call it. It's much like community colleges do routinely every year. This is probably going to be adjusted, revised and changed sometime in the next couple of months. I, I would expect that this budget will be revised sometime in September, up to August or September as we receive more information from the state. The state may very well revise their budget as well, even though they haven't even adopted it yet. We expect that they will adopt their budget. They should reach an agreement next week and the governor will probably sign by the end of the month. They may too have a revised budget before we're, we're finished with this process. We again used advice from Sacramento County Office of Education, Department of Finance Legislative Analysts Office to, to build the budget with our assumptions and planning factors. One of the things I wanted to point out early on in the process is that we've already been allocated $10.7 million in Phase II of the federal stimulus package, which we refer to as ESER. This has not been budgeted, so it's not yet budgeted in tonight's version. But we will budget it in our revision whenever that happens. That's $10.7 million. That needs to be spent by September of 2022. We were asked by the County Office of Education to present a range of revenue scenarios in this budget. And our range that we, that we projected with was a range of a minus 2% COLA, all the way down to a minus 10% COLA. And we'll talk about the, the number that we settled on in terms of presenting the budget tonight. And it's important for us to know that the country is officially in a recession. We just ended almost an 11-year economic expansion. I heard today that officially economists are saying that the recession began in February. I would have thought it would have been March, but they're saying it began in February. We had thought that unemployment rates would be climbing to 20% and I even thought by tonight they would be 20% because they were almost 15% and apparently climbing a month ago. But surprisingly, last Friday, the, the unemployment rate dropped to about 13.3%. That doesn't mean that it's necessarily on a consistent trend downwards. I think that we might see some bumping along with economic factors. We might see some metrics that begin to improve. But my guess is that the negative impact of our funding will last, likely last not only next year, but in the following year. And we'll see those in our numbers as we move ahead. Here's a vote overview tonight. Obviously, we'll talk about our legal requirements, more specific guidance from our county and state leaders. The EPA is a legal requirement. And then we'll get into the current year adjustments and then look a little bit more closely at next year and then our multi-year projections. First of all, our legal requirements, again, we're asking you to approve the revisions to the current year budget, adopt the proposed budget for appropriation reasons for next year's budget, fiscal year 21. And you can see the footnotes there to approve the EPA for the district and the reserve levels for the district for next year. Again, we've received a lot of guidance this year and sometimes in more than in past years, the guidance has been conflicting. And a lot of the, the sources that we're getting our information from are very credible sources. But that has been one of the frustrating pieces this year. A lot of the people that we usually get our direction from have not agreed on some of the parameters by which we should build our budget. So, but we have gotten our information from our County Office of Education, FICMAT, again, Department of Finance. I hear some of the important guidance that they've given us. One is to develop multiple scenarios, revenue scenarios, which we've done. There are two basic ways for the state to deal with the anticipated budget shortfall, which is considerable. One is just to reduce our funding, obviously. And another tool that they used and used quite a bit in the last recession 12 years ago was to introduce the concept, which is, is not really widely accepted in the accounting world, but that of deferrals or delayed payments. It's basically just the state giving us IOUs a year and shoving that payment off into the next year. That doesn't work forever. So if the state, for example, owes us 12 payments, this year they're only going to give us 11. And next year they might give us 12, but there's still one behind. And eventually, one year, they're going to need to give us 13. And sometimes that takes a few years before they're able to do that. And let's see, I think I'll move down. Obviously, the last bullet there, draw down our reserves judiciously. But I will say that we are planning to draw down our reserves. We did not have the highest percentage of reserves in the state, but we do have some reserves to help us get through next year, to help us prop up ourselves next year. And we'll probably have some help from the state and federal stimulus, we're hoping as well. Here's the requirement for the education protection account. And you can see the reference pages. I think this actually starts on page 228, where you can see the EPA funds for the district and for our one charter school. I'd like to talk about the major adjustments, revenue adjustments for the current year. This isn't all the major adjustments, but the ones that I kind of wanted to highlight, or at least the ones we really wanted to highlight a couple of weeks ago. This isn't all the major adjustments, but the ones that I kind of wanted to highlight, or at least the ones we really wanted to highlight a couple of weeks ago. First of all, this year, Prop ninety eight guarantee. The state has a huge deficit even in this current year. But one of the commitments of the governor has been to preserve the current year funding for schools. And so they're using federal stimulus dollars and even some state reserves to help with that. Because in reality, they could have cut Prop ninety eight this current year by a couple billion dollars. So we're fortunate that they have been committed to that and great, just grateful for that. But the one thing that we are expecting this year that they've announced is that our June apportionment payment that we would be receiving in the next week or two. We will not receive, and I think that's over thirty million dollars. That will be pushed off into July, so we can see the deferrals already beginning. So that payment will be shoved into fiscal year twenty one. And again, that's a tool that most people in the accounting world don't acknowledge too much, but it's a tool that the state has used. Fairly successfully in the past. Senate bill one seventeen, which I believe was about a billion dollars statewide, our share of that was six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It wasn't a billion dollars, a hundred billion dollars, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We are strategizing with that right now, I think we have about a third of that already committed. I think that has a spending date. Into year twenty one or twenty two, so we have some time to spend that. I wanna recognize a loss in revenue of our school meal program of about two point five million dollars. I actually spoke with our director this afternoon. They have this estimated at about two point seven million dollars as of this afternoon. If you can imagine, our meal program. Went from serving about twenty one or twenty two thousand meals a day. To about serving, serving about six or seven thousand meals a day. That really cut into their revenues at the federal reimbursement revenues, the state reimbursement and also the paid. The paid breakfast and lunch customers as well. We had, you know, obviously loss in local facility rental usage. And because of, I would say, because of the downturn in the economy, interest rates were lowered. Which decreased our interest rate earnings by about three hundred thousand dollars. When we look at current year expenses and adjustments, we did have some savings as we ended this year because of. Being able to shut buildings up and 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 other reasons. We had a hiring freeze that we began in late March, we believe we saved about a quarter million dollars by pausing. Filling vacant positions. We're continuing that into next year, you'll see. We had. Obviously, savings from certificated and classified substitute staff. Of about four hundred thousand dollars, utility savings by not using our buildings as much as we normally would, bus fuel savings. But then we also had some increases in expenses for this year, you can see about one point six million dollars that we used. To buy devices, Chromebooks. And also supply some hotspots for some families. Also, we transferred one point five million dollars to help the cafeteria fund. That's out of, that money comes out of base, or we may take that out of some federal stimulus dollars eventually, if those come in. Here is a look at all of our funds in the current year, you can see a lot of red. Red indicates deficits in the current year, at least projected deficits at this time. You can see at the top, we have our unrestricted and restricted, we pick up our general fund. You can see that our supplemental and concentration grant on that top row. And our base operational. Fund, which is really our day to day operations, both have a little over two million dollar deficits projected right now. I'm sure hoping that that we don't end the year that way, but that's our current projection. For a total deficit in our unrestricted general fund of about four point four million dollars. There's a deficit projected in our restricted fund, some of that may be intentional from year to year. As we intentionally spend some grants down. You can see deficits, big and small, in adult education. The Child Development Fund, which serves early childhood education and after school programs. A sizable loss there because some of those are fee based programs where we just were not able. To collect fees or provide services, although we did continue to pay staff. Cafeteria Fund of about four hundred thousand dollars, but only because we transferred a million and a half in there. And you can see the other ones, not to be concerned with the sizable deficit there in the building fund, which is our bond fund that was planned. I doubt that it will be that big by the end of the year. But, you know, we we sell bonds every other year. So you can see we're projecting to end this year with about sixty four million. Well, I would imagine we'll have more than that at the end of this year, but there, the district should schedule. That's my recommendation, the district schedule a bond sale sometime later this year, probably in the third or fourth quarter. Maybe September, October. I'd like to go on to the next slide here, here we can see again, staying in the current year unrestricted general fund. This is how their year has rolled out, we go all the way back to last June, when this budget was originally adopted. In the first column and we roll out each revision of the budget, so we can see where we are with our estimated actuals. Revenue of about three hundred eighty one million dollars, our expenses are fairly close to what we adopted clear back in June. You could see our projected deficit there, again, this includes base and supplemental of about four point four million dollars. A beginning fund balance of just over forty five, right now projected to fall below forty one, I'm sure hoping it doesn't by the end of the year. But that's where we are as of right now. When we break out the unrestricted general fund in the far right box. We see the breakout of supplemental concentration, a budget of about thirty six million and our base and everything else of three hundred forty five million, which is our, really our operational budget. Again, you go down to that blue row, you can see deficits in both of those. A little over two million dollars for a total of about four point four million dollars. So let's look at the planning factors for next year. We're all, sometimes we already refer to this as this year because we're so close, but it's fiscal year twenty one. We have built into the planning factors, the assumptions here, a reduction in our COLA of nearly eight percent. It's really a ten percent reduction of what we would have expected to get. But it's eight percent, seven point nine two percent reduction from current year. One thing that was a surprise this year, as the governor revised his proposal in May. Was a ten percent reduction to the transportation grant and ten percent reduction to the TIG. Or the Targeted Instructional Improvement Grant, that was about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. You can see our three year average for unduplicated pupil count, which are our targeted students. Is a little over fifty five percent still, so we do expect to get concentration grant monies again next year. We did receive about five hundred thousand this year. We can see a fairly flat funded ADA, but down slightly from this year. You know, probably one of the hardest things for us to project right now, and it was even difficult this year, we were surprised a little bit with our enrollment in ADA. But next year is probably even gonna be more difficult to project. You've heard some of the choices that some of our parents and families and students might have going into next year. And and we're just not sure what some of those choices or decisions will be. But right now, we're projecting that our ADA will be down about one twenty nine. One of the things that we've heard is being proposed downtown, and I think that they will need to do this, is to protect. District's funding through ADA next year and basically pin it to this current year. We already would have been protected anyway as a declining district, but that's a little bit reassuring for us. That our ADA next year's funded ADA is gonna be protected based on this year's actual average daily attendance. One of the things that the governor proposed with pension rates. This year STIRS was seventeen point one percent, it was supposed to go to eighteen point four. Actually, he's proposing to for it to go not up one and a half percent, but down one percent. So down to sixteen point one five, so that's about a two percent savings there. PERS rate was supposed to go up from nineteen seven. To twenty two seven, it's still going up, but only one percent instead of three percent, also a two percent spread. We have our stepping column, obvious, obviously our stepping column advancement, which is almost one percent of salary. Built into our budget and right now, we have about a six and a half percent increase in there for medical insurance. These numbers can be found in our first column, if we look at the planning factors for the next two years. You can see how we're projecting our funded ADA to maybe bounce up a little bit, at least the demographics, which suggests that. In fiscal year twenty two and then remain flat in twenty three. You can see the statutory COLA, which by, again, by statute is what we're supposed to be. Receiving as an increase from year to year. Two point three one percent this year is the statutory COLA, right now, two thousand twenty one, twenty two. Almost two and a half percent projected and then over three percent in fiscal year twenty three. You might remember that I've described in the past that the district really needs probably at least three and a half percent just to tread water. Just to maintain current programs, we need about a three and a half percent each year. Now, it would be nice if we could plan on those statutory COLAs, but we're not planning on those. You can see on the row below that, well, we're actually projecting the funded COLA to be. So for example, this next year, instead of a two point three one percent increase. We right now, based on the governor's revision, almost an eight percent decrease. So really about a ten percent reduction from what we were expecting to get. And then we're not expecting any funded COLAs in the next two years. Again, that's based on advice we've gotten from FICMAT, Department of Finance, School Services of California. I'm hoping that there might be some small COLAs in those out years, it'll depend on how quickly the economy recovers. You can see the impact on the local control funding formula, dollars per ADA. You can see the big hit next year of nearly eight percent. You can see the changes in STIRS rates. There, not only next year, but in the out years. And we do get some, the governor has proposed some relief in PERS and STIRS rates, not only for fiscal year twenty one, but fiscal year twenty two. So you can see that, especially in STIRS, the the help there. And but then you can see both of them kind of spike up in the third year. So you'll be able to see that in the NYPD budget projections. And then our medical insurance, I'll talk about this a little bit later, one of the good news items. Is our medical insurance increase of for next year may not be the six and a half percent that we're projecting. So I'll talk about that a little bit later. We were asked by the county office of education to give some revenue scenarios and here they are. You can see in the first column there, the statutory COLA is what we should be funded based on Prop ninety eight guarantee, two point three one percent COLA. You would see if we were getting that, the base grant would be nearly three hundred thirty seven million dollars. That would have been up about nine million dollars from the current year. Supplemental grant, thirty seven million dollars. And then we had a range of scenarios that ranged from minus two percent COLA all the way to a worst case of, not worst. Because we didn't know what worst would be at this point, but a minus ten percent scenario. We adopted, we're asking, we proposed this budget for adoption. Based on the governor's proposal in May, which is a minus seven point nine two percent COLA. You can see that if you go down that column, that's thirty three point seven million dollars. Less than we would have gotten if we'd gotten what we were supposed to get. Thirty three point seven in base, three point seven in supplemental grant for a total of almost thirty seven and a half million dollars. Less than we would have gotten under normal circumstances. I think there are some negotiations going on downtown, I think that. This adopted column that we have right here tonight, that we're asking you to adopt tonight, minus seven point nine two. In my estimation is probably the worst case scenario now. I'm hoping that that column moves to the left a little bit, I'm hoping it settles in closer to, closer to. No cut, but hopeful, especially hopeful that it could land somewhere between the minus two to the minus four percent would be very helpful. Let's look at some of the major revenue adjustments for next year, here's the minus thirty seven point four million on the top line. Minus thirty seven point four million and Prop ninety eight guarantee, we've already talked about that. Here's that ESER money that we talked about on the second row, ten point seven million dollars, I believe this. We have a couple of years to spend this, it is one time money, so it helps us prop up next year. It does have some strings attached, but strings that are very reasonable, we might be able to offset some current expenditures. We might also be able to use this for some of our unexpected expenditures that. That we weren't, we wouldn't normally have in these kind of situations. We have the FEMA reimbursements here, I talked to Mr. Kamara today and others who have been very helpful. On preparing claims for FEMA, one time we thought we'd be able to claim four or five million dollars worth of. Losses to FEMA to get reimbursement for. And as we've learned more about the process, the more we learn that. Those type of claims that we are expecting are not allowable. So I don't even know that we'll have one to two million dollars in claims in FEMA anymore, it might be well under a million dollars. Because of the rules that they've set up. For example, we thought we'd be able to claim our lost revenue for the cafeteria fund. Because early on, we were told that we would. But more recently, they've said that probably will not be an allowable claim. The next line down is a is a big one. It too is Federal Cares Fund that has already been appropriated to the state. It has no strings attached to it from the federal government's perspective. But the governor has attached some strings to it. Probably the biggest challenge with this one is the federal government says it should be spent by this coming December, by the end of December twenty twenty. It's four point four billion dollars, about one point five billion of this would be apportioned out based on special education. Population, the other two point nine is up for discussion downtown. The governor proposed to give that two point nine billion dollars primarily, or basically all of that two point nine billion dollars only to. Concentration districts of which, of which we are one. The legislature has pushed back on that concept that that two point nine billion dollars would be spread more evenly across the state to all school districts. I think that is still up for negotiation. At the bottom line is of this four point four billion dollars, depending on what allocation model they use. We should be eligible for anywhere between about twenty four million to thirty five million. From this four point four, somewhere between about twenty four million to thirty five million. Again, as of right now, unless they can get a waiver from the federal government, that would need to be spent by the end of December. But based on our earlier presentation tonight, you know that we have some things that, some ways that we can spend that money. To get our operation, our instructional model running for fall. We do expect that we'll probably have another loss in our school meal program, so I put to be determined there as well. We may very well have another loss in our facility rental use, a hundred thousand dollars. The governor also proposed really deep, steep reductions to some other programs like after school ACE's program, adult education, CTE. I think that's over a million and a half dollars. So we're hoping that there's some talk downtown about those programs as well. If we look at our expense side, major adjustments to next year. Here's that hiring freeze again, remember, we did have some savings in the current year from hiring freeze. Because of that, which is really kind of a reduction in force, but through natural attrition. Because when we have a vacancy, either through retirement or resignation, we just simply don't fill many of those positions right now. We might have a savings of about two million dollars, that's preferable to having more formal staff reductions like layoffs. Because we do it in a more natural way, but that would be, we think that we might have two million dollars in savings there. I know that Mr. Apollo out of Human Resources believe we may actually. Have more savings than even that, we we certainly think that that is possible. The pension rate reduction savings that we talked about, we think that's about four and a half million dollars. Again, the governor proposed about two percent reduction from expected both STIRS and PERS. So about four and a half million dollars in benefit there. We do believe that we're gonna have some utility savings going into next year, again, depending on the instructional model. Which is obviously, as you know, still being determined. Again, depending on the instructional model, which is obviously, as you know, still being determined. Supplies and materials and professional development, we've already made some of those reductions. Not only at school sites, but deep into the district office and other central departments as well. We think that is about $700,000. That may go a little deeper as we cut deeper into some of those areas. Substitute staff savings, certificated and classified, we believe, could be about $400,000. We also see some "to be determined," maybe increases in expenses. Cleaning and disinfecting, this could be easily a $1 million to $2 million increase in expenses over normal, if you will, increase in expenses for technology devices, increase. Transfer again to the cafeteria fund is, is probable. Let's look at the federal stimulus for next year. Again, it's one-time money for fiscal year 21, 2021. The top one, $10.7 million, we talked about ESER. These are some things, these are some ways that we might be able to expend some of these federal dollars. There's the 1.6 million that we had in technology devices out of this current year. Right now, we've taken those out of base funds, but we'll probably shift that, those costs either to ESER or to the CRF allocation that is at the bottom of this page. $1.5 million transfer to the cafeteria fund. We originally have taken that out of our base grant. We may shift that to one of these federal grants as well. We likely will. Next year, another contribution to the cafeteria fund, depending on the instructional model, possibly, probably a contribution to the Early Childhood Education Fund, which serves preschool and after-school programs. Maybe contribution to adult education, depending on the funding there and in CTE. And then, we'll probably have, we will have a required contribution to the non-public schools that serve our students of, I think, somewhere between $150,000 and $200,000. At the bottom of the page is the big $4.4 billion proposed by the governor. We do, again, we do not know what our appropriation would be here. Again, I said it could be in the range of 24 to 35 million, and it's going to have some strings attached. And it is for learning loss mitigation, and it, as of right now, may need to be spent by the end of December 2020. But we may be able to shift some of these costs listed above into that bucket as well. Here's all the funds for fiscal year 21. You can see the big deficits in the unrestricted, the 1.8 in supplemental grant. Here's the number that some people are really interested in, the $22 million deficit in the base grant for a total of $24 million in unrestricted. Now, remember, we don't have some of the dollars I just talked about in the budget yet. We don't have that $10.7 million available. It won't be in the unrestricted. It'll be in the restricted fund, but we might be able to shift some cost into that. And we don't have that big $24 to $35 million allocation in the budget yet either, which might offer some relief to the base grant here. So, this is not where we'll end up with a $24 million deficit, and at least my expectation, in the unrestricted general fund. So, I expect that number to improve at the first revision. We see, you know, deficits in adult education, possibly. Possibly, I think the Child Development Fund might even, will be bigger than that. Cafeteria fund, another million dollar loss. And you can see down here, we're expecting this $150 million other financing in the building fund to be a bond sale sometime next year, so that'll help that fund. So, this is the first column that we have as we unravel and unroll fiscal year 21, 2021. The adopted budget, there's the $24 million deficit that we're projecting as of right now. I would expect that in the Budget Act, those numbers will be quite different in the second column and possibly even different still in the first interim. The first interim is the first time we'll have to certify the budget. And we should probably be grateful that we don't have to certify the budget with the adopted budget, because it definitely would not be a positive budget. In fact, it would probably not even be a qualified budget at this point. It would probably be a negative budget if we had, if we actually had to certify. And here it is broken out in that first box. The $24 million broken down, about 1.8 million out of supplemental and over 22 million out of base. So, let's, let's follow those numbers as the year progresses. I invite you to do that in future reports and watch how those change, hopefully. Here's the multi-year projections, fiscal year 22 and fiscal year 23. Now, while I said that 2021, the numbers will probably change quite a bit, because we should be getting more federal dollars to prop that budget up. Those federal dollars will not extend into these two years. So, I would say these two years, the figures are more accurate. So, I want to say that again. I would say deficits that are projected in these the deficits that are projected in these two years are probably more accurate. So, $31.5 million deficit projected in fiscal '22 and over $47 million in the following year. Again, that's based on all the planning factors and assumptions that I outlined tonight. That's 0% COLAs and things like that. So, you can see what that does to our ending fund balance. It gets into red, the red real quickly. We don't even, we're not even able to finish fiscal year '22 in the black. We go deep into the, into the red. This, this is what a negative budget looks like. Again, it also assumes that we don't make any adjustments. So, the latest news, again, we, we see that we're in the middle probably of possibly the worst economic downturn in 90 years, depending on how long it lasts. The full impact may not be known for months. We might not know even where we are, where we stand in this current year or next year until August or September. Much of our projections are based on still unknowns of our instructional delivery models or how parents or students will choose between those models. So, we're going to continue to watch federal and state economy as they unfold. And let me see, good news, I wanted to kind of pull out a little bit of good news that we might be able to find. The governor did keep a proposal to, that he originally proposed in January to increase funding for special education, 15% increase, $645, taking it up to $645 per pupil. The most recent suggestion I've seen on this is that it would go to $625 per pupil, but the legislature seems to be pretty supportive of that as well. So, that is an increase, and it's about $3 million for our district. That is included in our budget. Again, the, the pension rate relief is about $4.5 million savings for us. That's extended not only next year, but the following year. One of the things that I've worked on a lot is this third bullet on a statewide basis, the change of the calculation to the RMA, the Routine Repair and Maintenance Account. We're fine, we were finally able to, after about a year working on this, exclude the state pension payments, the STIRS on behalf of, from this calculation. The bottom line is that $600,000 savings to the base grant. We don't think that'll go away. We don't think that's a one-time thing. So, that's some, some flexibility that we were looking for. We do believe that our district health and welfare insurance will not be the 6 and 1/2% increase that we have in our budget now. We think that might be closer to 0% increase, so that could help us at our first revision. One of the things that the governor has proposed, right now, there's three tests for Prop 98, and test one says that Prop 98, K-14 funding, shall be about 38 and 1/2% of the overall state budget. The governor has proposed, as I think, an effort of goodwill to increase that guarantee in test one from 38 and 1/2% to 40% of the state general fund budget, beginning in fiscal year '22. So, it doesn't help us next year, but I think it's a good expression of his priority for the future. I don't know where the legislature is on that as well. And again, the $4.4 billion, again, we might be able to get 24 to 35 million dollars, one-time money, only to prop up next year, not to be carried over in the following year. But will help our fund balance going into fiscal year '21, '22. Next steps, as I said, we're just going to watch what's happening nationally on a state level, the economy, wait and see what comes from the capital, the negotiations. I'm sure well underway right now. We'd probably see some news starting to come out the end of this week or early next week. So, with that, I'd like to turn it back over to you, President Viasquez, for the hearing. And then, I'd be able to hear some questions from the board, if you'd like, and answer those if I can.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stevens. I declare the topic of the proposed 2021 budget a public hearing. Mr. Allen, are there any public comments on this item?
At this time, we've not received any emailed comments or form comments on this item. It has looked like we have one member who is here with us on Zoom who has raised their hand. For those who are here with us on Zoom, if you would like to comment on this item, we'd ask that you raise your hand at this time by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen on a mobile device or the bottom of the participant's screen on your desktop device, star nine, if you have dialed in for the meeting tonight.
Okay, at this time, I'll recognize Gabriel, who has raised their hand using the Zoom function. Gabriel, please begin your two minutes when you're ready.
Yeah, it's April again. For some reason, I get a lot of feedback. I'm not sure why. And I was wondering if there's any way that they could revise or reconsider an increase to the medical premiums of the 6.5% rate? I feel like that's a lot for teachers, especially when they're already struggling with all the things that are going on right now in the world. And to add that financial stressor on your teachers, I think, is a lot. I'm a teacher myself. I don't work for your district. I just think that that is something that should seriously be considered as a panel.
Thank you very much for that public comment. Are there any other public comments at this time?
At this time, we do not have any other public comments.
Okay, there being no further public comments, this public hearing is closed. Do any board members have questions or comments at this time? And we'll begin with Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens, and your report. I just have a quick question. On the beginning pages, you used the word "on the reserve," judiciously using that to, using that. What does that look like to you and when, when we, when we will need that? On the reserve?
I'm not sure what, when, when do you think we'll need, when do I think we'll start drawing down our reserves?
Yes.
This year.
And can you give us an idea? I mean, I know you got a
Well, the, the presentation I just made said that we would reduce them by $4 million. So, that starts this year.
Okay.
And so, and next year, $24 million, but I don't actually think that one will happen. So, the reserves are starting to be drawn down, starting this year likely. We have about $45 million. That's what those deficits mean. When we have deficits, the only way we can, we can fund those deficits is by drawing down our savings, our reserves.
Okay, so, from our, from our 40, based on what you showed us today, we're going to, you know, we're cutting the, you know, 24, 22, 26 million dollars out of those reserves, pretty much, based on what we saw today, correct?
Well, next year, we're expecting some federal stimulus dollars to come our ways, which will prop us up for next year.
Okay, I see.
So, and we don't know how much that is yet. Like I said, we don't know if it's somewhere between 24 and 36 million dollars. So, next, next year, we might not draw down the reserves. If we're lucky, we might not draw down the reserves at all. It partly depends on how many new additional costs we have. We're not sure of that. We, we might have some costs that, that we're not planning for based on our instructional models. We, we're trying to, we're trying to anticipate all those costs, but I'm sure there'll be some costs that we don't even know about right now that might, that we might become more aware of as we get closer to the fall, so. Still, still a lot of question marks. I wish I could have some more certainty for you, but we expect that we, we might, we may very well start dipping in our reserves this fiscal year, which ends in a couple of weeks. I'm hoping not, but if you look at these numbers, we would start drawing those reserves down. So, that's why Mr. Hernandez, in year three, if nothing changed, if these assumptions were correct, which I'm saying they're not,
Right.
we would be in the red by, by March of '22. We would, we would be in a negative budget.
Right.
We'd be taken over by the state, but the team that you have assembled here, starting with the superintendent, is not going to let that happen.
Got it.
So.
And remind me what we're required to have in those reserves?
We're required to have 2%, so about $10 million.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Ken, do you want to answer the question now that the, the member of the public asked as well? Because you, you could answer that.
Yeah, that's not a cost. I mean, the 6 and 1/2% cost that we built into the budget is given to us by our consultants. We, our health providers are Kaiser Permanente and Western Health, and they're the ones who tell us their estimate for the increase in premium costs. And that's, that's, you know, that's the projection that the, the district and shared by the employees would pay. The good news is, I've already spoken to Kaiser Permanente, and they don't think their, at least their portion of it, will go up by 6 and 1/2%. It might be closer to zero. That was actually surprising when you consider all the things going on and the cost of other types of insurance that are going through the roof. But, so it might not actually be the 6 and 1/2%. I think that'll be revised. But that's not a number that, that we create. That's a number that our consultants provide to us, our health providers. They're saying, we think your premium's going to go up 6 and 1/2%. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you. Next up, we have Ms. Costa.
Mr. Stevens, what types of things are allowable for FEMA reimbursement? Would the personal protective equipment be reimbursable?
Yeah, to be honest with you, that's probably the most common one right now. So, yeah, that's, that, that one is, but we can't, I, I'm not the expert on FEMA. We have a team of people working on that. I, I'm not the expert on all things, and that would be very difficult for me to, to, to be. But PPNE, the Personal Protection Equipment, is a big one. We could not count lost employee productivity for all the people who we were paying but not working. We could not count the lost revenues that we experienced in the food service program. We could not count the Chromebooks that technology had to purchase or the hotspots that we had to purchase. All those things we originally thought might be on the list. So, though.
Could we count the Chromebooks that aren't returned?
Not sure.
The loss of?
I don't know. I'm going to, I'm going to say I don't know.
Okay. It seems like that's a place where we might get some money back if we're persistent, but somebody described it as the wild, wild west, so I don't.
Yeah, and even, even when you do make a claim, a dollar claim, you get 75 cents back. So, you don't even, it's not even a dollar to dollar. Some of those things are still, I think, unknown, but we do have a good team like Peter Skibitzky in technology, Frank Camarda, Tane in food service. We have a team of seven or eight people that are working on this and really digging into the details on what we can make claims for.
Great.
I can tell you that it changed a lot in about four weeks of what we thought we could claim then versus what we thought we could claim now.
Thanks. Thanks for the report.
Thank you.
Ms. Creason.
Thank you for the report. I do have a few questions. And so, I absolutely understand the uncertainty in the budget, and I appreciate it coming back September, August. So, is it correct that the board would be informed and would take action if our spending is going to if our spending is gonna go over the estimates provided in this document?
What... This document is your... If you adopt this document tonight, you are setting an appropriation limit, and by law, we cannot go over that.
So yes, you would come back?
Yes.
Okay, and is it... Just a minute, sorry.
And that's why we have revised budgets throughout the year as well, because the budget is constantly evolving.
I understand. And Mr. Stevens, I say asking questions that the community asks. So we're about to approve a budget that's very uncertain, which makes 100% sense. Totally understand that. But the community wants to know that, okay, we're not just writing a blank check, that it would come back to us if, you know, estimates are off. So I hear you, and I get it, but I think that it just needs to be said. Another question I have is, a lot of community members, along with myself, have questions about our spending on law enforcement. And it's my understanding that a lot of the services are wrapped up into consultancy, so it's really hard to kind of identify where that spending is. So I did ask a couple of questions before the board meeting, and that was really helpful. It's my understanding that we're gonna be spending about $100,000 less on law enforcement in the 2021 fiscal year than we are in this current fiscal year. So the math I came up with is, next fiscal year, we'd be spending about $128K on law enforcement, and that's not counting what we pay for this SCOE agreement. Is that correct?
I... You'll have to ask Mr. Allen, but it's more than $128,000.
Okay, I posed the question. Do anyone here can answer?
Mr. Allen oversees that. The superintendent may know that answer, too.
Yeah, and I think that the difference there is the cost of safe schools is more than that. And I think, Ms. Creason, that's where we're looking at... Like, our safety specialists are law enforcement, and we shifted to that model the other year. So, but that probably together is in a budget. So what we shared with you, the information that I shared with Trent, that's more on the, like, outside law enforcement, what we would call uniformed officers.
Yeah, no, I understand that. And so are those numbers correct for that bucket, for the uniformed officers?
Yes, what was shared... That's correct.
Okay, okay. I'm gonna say it one more time to make sure that I understand. So the numbers that I just said are for officers in uniform. This has nothing to do with our safe schools budget, which doesn't include any officers on duty. I'll say it like that.
Well, I won't say it doesn't have anything to do with our safe schools budget, because there may be some... There could be some... Like, that MOU may have an agreement, and that may be under Trent's safe schools budget. But I think what we really need to separate is we made a significant shift two years ago in moving away from those uniformed officers that were in areas and went to those safety specialists by regions. And really, that was about trying to build those relationships on those campuses. You know, Bob Erickson, Mike Jones, and Trent is here. Trent, you want to jump in a little bit as well?
Sure. So just reviewing what Superintendent Colonel was referring to, as you know, we changed the model for safe schools a couple of years ago. It used to be that we had five or more off-duty officers, so those were uniformed sheriff's deputies who were patrolling the district on any given day, as well as two uniformed officers from the city of Citrus Heights. We paid off-duty rates through our MOU with the Sheriff's Department for those officers to be in the district patrolling at our discretion. As we've moved to this new model, we reduced that from the five to seven down to just two in the district. Next year, we're actually looking to go down to just one. So to your point, Ms. Creason, we will be, from the safe schools budget, which is the bulk of spending in that category, virtually reducing by half our budget next year for the spending in that category. Now, the caveat and the catch to that is there's some spending for that for extra treatment activities and other pieces, where we provide extra security at school events and other pieces. That's a little harder to calculate, and the numbers we gave you, that's still kind of that question mark piece. So that's where I would just give a little leeway to the numbers you're providing, is that that number ebbs and flows from year to year depending on need, and that's not a number that we can give you necessarily a solid number on right this second.
Okay, so I want to repeat... I'm sorry.
And Ms. Creason, I think that's because that comes out of each individual school's budget. And so to really gather that, we'd have to do quite a bit of work to go look at each of those sites. So Trent tried to do kind of an overview related to outside contracts. Now, I did ask the question to high school principals and middle school as well. What services, services, supports, and something else do those individuals currently provide for you? And is there another way that those services could be provided? Just asking the questions if that could be a possibility. So Rick and I had that conversation today, and that's gonna happen with his principals.
Awesome. I think that's great, and I just want to make sure that I understand what Mr. Allen had just said about the half, when we were talking about it's gonna be about half of last year's spending in that category. Were we talking about safe schools or were we talking about the uniforms? I'm just... I'm sorry, I'm getting a little lost.
So within the safe schools programs, program, we have now in our new model two elements. We have our safe schools community's safety specialists, which are district employees. Those are continuing on. We're not reducing our spending there per se. The other element that we've traditionally had in safe schools, and before we had our own safety specialists, the only thing we really had were off-duty, uniformed deputies that were part of the program. We've continued to reduce our reliance on those as we built up our own resources and really focused those on interventions and other pieces. So as we've built that up, we've reduced the need for the uniformed folks to be on campuses, to be patrolling. So we're continuing that trend. And again, this year, where we had budgeted for two uniformed off-duty deputies to be available to us during the day, we are planning for only one to be available to us next year at this point. So we'll be essentially, within the safe schools budget, reducing our expense by about half for those uniformed officers to be on in the district.
Okay, so that's the only place that we're cutting money, the half, it only applies. The only reduction in funding is that one bucket, and that's the uniformed officers.
Correct.
And does that tie back to the numbers I mentioned at the beginning?
It does.
Okay, so what I think would be very helpful is if there can be, and I understand it's gonna be work, but I'd be remiss if I didn't ask, a supplemental document, something that makes it very transparent and easy for a community member to see exactly what we're spending on law enforcement at the district level, at the site level, and just really analyzing that. And I understand, you know, that's gonna take time, and we could talk more about what that looks like, but I think now more than ever, we really need to be able to explain that, especially because, you know, we're making commitments in light of the current situation, and this is front and center. So we need to be able to say that. And so I understand, I have my own organizational budget. All my consultants are wrapped up into a consultant line. It's not itemized. I get it. But I think a supplemental document, so we can tell that story and explain what we're spending. And then frankly, that I, you know, as a board member, could have more clarity and wrap my head around it, it would just be very helpful.
You know, one of the other things that I would say we could try and do, because we did this, and Trent, this was many years ago, we provided a B.C. comparing what we were spending in our district compared to others, because that gives you a little context. And I will share with you, Zima, we were spending probably... Oh, God, I remember, like, significantly, significantly less. Like, some other districts may have been around $2 or $3 million, and we were in the $700,000 category. So that kind of provides you context, because there's still a requirement for us to keep our students and our community safe. And I think that creates some balance, and it's a similar conversation, I think, I have. As we go into this budget time, we're gonna try and have some tools where people are gonna say, "Well, just cut this." Well, we may actually be spending the least amount of anybody in the whole region on that already, and we can't afford to cut anymore of that. So I think that would be helpful as well to have the broader perspective of what that looks like regionally.
Yeah, I love that idea. I think that's great, and I want to make clear, too, I'm not here to advocate slashing law enforcement budgets tonight. Not to say that that won't come up, but it's just me trying to seek... I'm just seeking to understand, and it's just not easy to see... Understandably, it's just not easy to gather it from the documents in front of us. So I just want to be clear about my intent tonight.
And I think it would take us a while to get the information that I'm talking about, because now we have to go try and get that from other districts. But that's something we could do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Creason. Dr. McKibben?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Yes.
Can you hear us?
Okay, good.
Okay, great.
Sorry. What happened was I was going through my iPhone, and my iPhone ran out of juice. And so I was gone for a while. I apologize for being a letup. Just a couple of very quick questions. On page 188 of the document, you talk a bit about declining enrollment and say enrollment decreases are not considered in this. If we take a look at the item that we had just before this, it appears that there is a reasonable chance, hopefully a small chance, but a reasonable chance that indeed our populations may increase, may decrease substantially if we employ the models, particularly the distance learning models, according to the 9,000 people that responded to our survey. Where would... If that happened, where would that... Would that appear in the budgets that we get in September and October and those sorts of things? And we'd have to make some pretty drastic budgets, or would that be further in the future, Mr. Stevens?
Well, as I mentioned in the presentation, right now, what we're hearing from the state is that next year's ADA, which is what you're talking about, is the safety net for that is this current year. And I see President Vasquez shaking her head that that's probably what she's hearing from downtown as well. So we're a little bit protected for next year, 2020, '21, but where it would really hit the district would be in the following year, because the ADA would be re-benched next year. So that's where it really could affect the district is in 2021, '22.
Okay, that is... That is pretty much what I expected you to ask, and it does relieve some of my fears and so forth. The second one is a pretty insignificant question, but it's a curiosity more than anything else. Over the last few years, we have tried to reduce our utility costs by things like, what was it called, Proposition 39, solar shares, and different kinds of things over years. Do our utility bills that you show in this budget reflect, already reflect the savings that we've had in solar costs? And do you anticipate that staying fairly constant or getting better? Or it's just so small an amount that it's really not worth worrying about?
No, it's not a small amount. I mean, they've done great work there. So I think the savings over what we thought we would have to spend are probably seven figures. So, and Mr. Camarda would know probably a little bit more accurately, but I think a seven-figure savings is not out of line, and he continues to look for ways to save. I mean, just yesterday, I believe, we talked about possibly a new solar project. So he's continually looking for opportunities to save in utilities. So the one thing that's hard to measure there is, we kind of have to estimate the savings... You might not see the savings in an actual budget reduction. You have to look at the savings in the context of what we would have spent in utilities had we done nothing.
Right.
Well, that's a little bit harder to calculate sometimes. So sometimes it might look like the utility budget is flat, but when it normally would have gone up $1 million, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does, and it's useful in terms of, but we don't talk about that as a savings in the good news very much, do we? And it seems to me like that's pretty good news.
Right, and they've done good work. They've done good work.
And I would say we do talk about it. We talk about it when we bring those items forward and we really highlight. I think that's what, you know, as Mr. Camarda has brought those items forward, we've said, "These are the savings that we'll have." And I will share with you, we highlight that as well with our bargaining groups, when we're saying we've been trying to reduce ongoing costs year after year after year. That's one of the things that's allowed us to not have to make some other cuts maybe in previous years up to this point.
But they don't necessarily appear in our budgets, right, though? In turn, as good news.
Well, it's just harder to capture the story, because...
Okay.
Yeah, you don't... You can't... It's hard to show what they would have been. You'd have to do an...
Yeah, you're trying... I understand exactly what you're doing. I just think that it's something that... The more we can point this out, and I think the better we are.
Yeah, we try to point out those efficiencies whenever we can, and you're right, utilities is one that we've worked on quite a bit. It's just that it's maybe not so easy to see in the budget itself.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McKibben, and thank you, Mr. Stevens, for the very thorough report. There are... To say there are a ton of moving parts here would be a significant understatement. I think we're used to asking you to build a relatively strong budget, and right now, we're asking you to do it with certainty and accuracy and like the strength of toothpicks right now, and it can all just come crumbling at any moment. And so I would certainly appreciate kind of your opening words about... This is the only accurate piece of this is that we know that it's not gonna be accurate. But thank you and your team. Certainly, this reflects a lot of your years of expertise and work, and I'm thankful to have all of that history that you bring and that knowledge that you bring to what is, again, a very significant and hard target to pin down. I also just wanted to take an opportunity to thank my colleague, Ms. Creason. I had also, prior to the meeting, went on with staff, asked similar questions about about our contracts with law enforcement and how that's been budgeted, and also requested kind of a continuum, so we could see kind of prior investments compared to now and really how it has trended. So I look forward to seeing some of that information come forward, likely in a B.C. or other communication. I just wanted to kind of confirm what you're hearing in terms of the ADA. It does seem like they're going to adopt a hold-hymnless provision there, which I think is just a temporary sense of protection. Again, I think at some point, those real ADA numbers are gonna come back. And, you know, if we're not given the resources to do this right, it could be at a significant detriment. Quite frankly, I mean, as we talk and hear from all of our parents and kind of what they expect and need out of us in order to meet the needs, both educational and otherwise of their family, we have a lot of really critical decisions to make here in short order with not a ton of precise information. I also know that, I mean, we have to close down the budget in about three days, and I'm pretty involved on the only other thing that probably takes up about as much money, which is the health and human services side of the budget. And even that's a significant, a significant target, moving target. You know, the administration put out a budget that was based on an assumption around kind of a worst-case scenario and what we saw in the 2008 recession. And again, already, those numbers seem worse, and the piece that we could not solve for, right, was that delta and kind of what we called the slope. What impact does it have that this happened, not over years, but instead over weeks? That's the missing piece that we're all looking for, trying to solve for, and we're not sure if that's going to be... We're not sure if we'll see the impact of that a year from now or a couple of months from now, right? But I think the legislature is pushing back pretty strongly on a lot of those estimates that were based on 2008-level assumptions, knowing that, again, all of that will adjust over time. that were based on 2008-level assumptions, knowing that, again, all of that will adjust over time. And then the only other, I wanted to just respond to also Ms. Costa's questions about the FEMA provisions. I mean, even those, a lot of the FEMA Public Assistance Program dollars really are based in quote-unquote "a traditional response" reimbursement system, and so that's largely around reimbursing for actual destruction and demolition of infrastructure and building, et cetera. And I would say we've seen it evolve a little bit to be a little bit more fitting towards this longer-term disaster that we find ourselves in. But for the most part, because I think it has come to the surprise of a lot of local jurisdictions that what we anticipated would get reimbursed is in fact not at that 75% level. The one place that we do seem to be getting some flexibility, and I certainly hope that's the case on this as well, is anything around addressing food needs and food requirements. They seem to be a little bit more flexible on that, given my, with the experience that I've had on the other side of, of this. So we'll see if that comes to fruition, but otherwise, it really is a lot of just like actual buildings and infrastructure. It doesn't really go towards time and indirect material costs, which is unfortunate. And then I just also wanted to speak a little bit to the efforts of the state happening that are ongoing in terms of offering PPE and EPG, which is a new term that has come up in the recent weeks. But we know, I know that the state won't be able to provide a full year's worth, but they are looking to provide at least an initial stockpile for schools. And thankfully, that includes kind of beyond masks, but materials for extra cleaning, et cetera, like, and, and all of that, those things that we'll be expected to do, I think, on a more frequent basis to maintain public health standards and requirements. So those are all still kind of ongoing, but I anticipate that it'll bring a little bit of relief in the bigger context of the significant deficit that we're looking at. It's not a ton, but hopefully it's a little bit. But of course, those will continue to play out over the next couple of days.
President Viasca?
Yes, go ahead.
Can I ask you a question? What are you hearing about the distribution of the 4.4 billion?
I haven't, I don't have a lot of insight on that, sorry. That's still kind of very much up in the air. I don't, the, all I know is that people are not in agreement on how to distribute it. So I don't know where that's going to land in terms of a deal. I know folks are very far apart, so, other than that, I don't have a lot to offer. But again, want to just echo my thanks to the team. This is no easy feat. And thank you, Mr. Stevens, for all of your work on this.
Thank you.
With that, is there a motion to adopt the 20, oh, yes. I apologize.
I, I was, that's what I was going to do, I was going to move.
Okay, all right, I will get through the motion first, and then I will entertain, entertain a motion. Is there a motion to adopt the 2021 budget and approve the revisions to the 1920 budget? It sounds like we do have a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. McKibben. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hernandez. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 That was unanimous. Thank you all. We are now at item five, temporary inter-fund borrowing of cash. Mr. Stevens, please begin when you are ready.
Thank you very much. This is a routine item that we bring at the end of each year. It allows the administration to allow for inter-fund borrowing between funds. Sometimes because of cash flow circumstances at the end of the year or even during the year, one fund may need to temporarily borrow from another fund, just because the way their revenues come in and things like that. So there are rules around that. It's something that we bring to the board every year. And we just need to get your permission and approval to do that. So we're, the superintendent has asked me to consider to allow us to do that, so that we can pay bills out of each bucket. Usually those bills have to do with maybe May or June payroll.
Those are important bills. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Mr. Allen, do we have any visitor comments on this item?
We do not have any submitted visitor comments at this time. If you are here on the Zoom with us and would like to comment on this item, we would invite you to raise your hand and signal that you would like to comment.
Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion, or do my colleagues have any questions or comments? I apologize. I'm seeing Universal head nodding in the negative. Dr. McKibben, do you have any questions or comments? Dr. McKibben? Okay, I'm going to take that as a no. Is there a motion to adopt resolution number 2994 to permit temporary inter-fund borrow, borrowing of cash?
So moved.
It's been moved by Ms. Creason. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Ms. Costa. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Dr. McKibben? Okay, that'll be a four to zero vote with one abstention. We are at item J, board reports. Do any of my colleagues wish to share out a board report? We will begin with Mr. Hernandez.
I have nothing to report.
Okay, Ms. Costa?
I do have, I got to spend an hour and a half with Michelle Horner, a teacher at Trajan. And she spent the time showing me how she organized her distance learning classrooms. And she has a fourth, fifth grade combination. So she was planning ELA lessons and math lessons for fourth grade and fifth grade, as well as social studies. And I thought the piece the board would really just smile about. Her last lesson for the last week of school was called "Kindness is My Superpower." And little did she know what was going to happen in the world when she put that out. But I thought, as I looked at the lessons and all of the videos she had gathered and all of the activities to promote kindness, it was absolutely the best social-emotional learning that I could imagine. And I thought, how lucky her students were. That every student had had that during that particular week. And then the second thing is, I have managed to attend eight of the virtual graduations live on SEC, SEC. And I just want to thank staff for the jobs that they've done, both in the videotaping and putting pictures together. It's been amazing. And then the school staffs have created something different and unique for their schools, whether it's choir singing or an individual student singing, how they do the castle turns. And tonight, I was really lucky because closed session ended early enough. I could watch Maraki's graduation in the period of time from the time we entered closed session until we started an open session. They had comments from every staff member about one of their graduates. And it was just beautiful to watch and very touching. So although I'm sorry that we are having not real-time graduations, at least they made lemonade out of lemons in this case, and every one of them has been just a beautiful, touching ceremony. So thanks to our staffs for doing that. And to Mr. Allen's department, you guys really went above and beyond. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Costa. Ms. Creason?
I'll be brief, and please forgive anything you may hear from my children. My earbuds died, and you're on speaker. Who knows how that's going to go. So I'll make it really, really brief. I just want to acknowledge it's Pride Month, it's June, and we can't celebrate the way that we should. And last year was so beautiful. I know staff and President Viasca spent a lot of time getting contentious together, and there was a great march. It was fabulous, and we can't do any of that this year. So I just want to recognize it is Pride Month. My heart is with you, and hopefully next year will make up for this year.
Excellent report. Dr. McKibben, do you have a board report?
We do not have Dr. McKibben connected, so we, he will not have a report tonight.
Okay. I do not have a report this evening. It was lovely hearing from my colleague. Thank you all for your reports. We are at item K, future agenda items. Do any board members wish to add any items to the future agenda? Okay, seeing none. We are at item L, visitor comments. Mr. Allen, are there any other visitor comments at this time?
We do not have any visitor comments at this time. Quadruple checking, nobody has snuck one in on the form. We do not have any comments at this time.
Okay, we do not need to return to closed session. So with that, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much for your time. Good night.
Thank you all for attending. The next meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for June 23rd. It is anticipated that meeting will also be held online on the Zoom platform. You'll be able to find more information and a login link at sanjuan.edu/june23 starting tomorrow afternoon. Thank you again for joining us.